Monday, June 23rd, Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Redgate, could you lay this in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
My name is Ms. Your pardon. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Director Nakandro, if you could kindly call roll, please. Here.
Just for the audience, my name is Darlene Nakandro. I'm the Director of Development Services for the city, overseeing the Planning, Engineering, Building and Code Enforcement divisions. And tonight I'll be filling in for the city planners, Sergio Madera and our principal planner, Rob Dymahowski. So going into roll call, Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Anthony.
Present.
Commissioner Redgate.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
And Commissioner Dodds.
Commissioner Dodds indicated he would be absent this evening.
Thank you. Morrissey, do we have any communication on matters not on the agenda?
Chair Morrissey, yes, we do. Could Mike Bullock, please come forward? You will have three minutes to speak. Announce your name clearly for the gallery and the recording, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. My name is Mike Bullock. I live at 1800 Bayberry Drive here in Oceanside. And I wonder if this is going to project up on the screen. Is this where you're presenting? Oh, and there is, and... As the ice go. But anyway, this is real data. And... So there's two variables being plotted here, and these are the world famous, I hope, NOAA plots. They've been around for over 20 years. This is accepted science. People have liked to challenge this. I mean, after all, nobody was there to measure this stuff 800,000 years ago. That's what it is. On the bottom, it looks like 800, but that's 800,000 years ago. And the two variables are a temperature anomaly, which is just with respect to a reference selected to kind of be what we should be experiencing right now. And then the other variable is atmospheric CO2. And I guess everybody knows how important that is. That molecule has a... An important frequency that matches heat, and therefore it has the property that it attracts or it absorbs infrared, and then it emits it in another direction. And so it has the effect of trapping heat. So that's... So some molecules are, most molecules are not. Anyway, so that's atmospheric CO2 in the blue. And you can see there's a lot of correlation there, and that's just climate change. I've had neighbors that tell me, hey, Mike, climate's always changed. Man, lighten up. Climate's always changed. And so, yep, you can see it's always changed, and there's nothing to be alarmed about there at all, except at zero, on the far right side. That's where we're living. We're living in that crazy blue thing that I made real bold, so you would be sure to notice it. That point up there is 420 parts per million. We haven't seen that in millions of years. And I say, "we haven't seen," that's a pretty funny thing to say, because our species is known to be 300,000 years old. So it's just, we're as old as that 300 there. Now, Neanderthal lived through all that, so there really is no problem with any of that that we're looking at, except that spike. That is a huge problem. That changes everything. Changes our life, changes the way we look at things, changes the way we do things and talk about everything. The thing about it being up there and that slope being, looks like it's infinite, isn't the worst thing. The worst thing is the temperature is still down.
Could you wrap it up?
And it's going to go up. So I got about four plots, but I don't think I'm going to get there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Or can we vote, please?
Excuse me, Commissioners, I must apologize. Can you please vote again? My apologies, technical difficulties, but it was 5-1.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I see nothing on our consent calendar, and I see nothing on our transportation items. So now we can get into our public hearing. And tonight, we're going to hear about 235 South Tremont, Oceanside Transit Center Redevelopment Project, and applicant is Toll Brothers Apartment Living. And disclosures, I'll start. Read the materials, read most of the emails, visited the site, and talked to some folks in the neighborhood next to the Transit Center. Commissioner Anthony.
Read the report, went by the site, tried to read all of the emails. Yeah. Didn't talk to anybody, but it's a pretty big project.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I'm impressed. Everybody got through the whole report. I'm new commissioner, and reading all of that was a lot. I did not, was not able to read every word of the materials, but I did read all of the public comments and went back and referenced where I could, where that public comment was speaking to. I know the area. I've did a walkabout down there, and I've spoken to some family and friends about it.
Commissioner Rosales.
Yeah, staff report, visited the area, know it very well, and read all those emails that we received.
Commissioner Redgate.
I reviewed the report. I drove by the area. I'm familiar with the area. I spoke to some community members in my neighborhood and asked some questions to council members.
Thank you. And Commissioner Balma.
Staff report, several trips down there and spoke to neighbor, and very familiar with the site.
Thank you. Director Nakandro, you have the floor.
Sorry, just checking the microphone. Good evening, Chair Morrissey, Commissioners. My name is Darlene Nakandro with Development Services Department. The item before you tonight is the proposed Oceanside Transit Center, or OTC, redevelopment project. Um, let me get the... Excuse me. The project slide, project site is shown here on this slide. Shows the existing NCTD Oceanside Transit Center located at 235 Tremont Street. It's approximately 10.15 acres in size and provides rail service and bus service. The existing land use and zoning include the general plan, downtown district, and coastal zone, and for zoning includes commercial, residential, public transportation, and office. First some background. In 2016, NCTD adopted a policy to pursue redevelopment projects, and that included trying to generate revenue, increase transit ridership, reduce auto reliance, and create jobs and affordable housing. In 2020, a request for proposals was issued for the proposed project. Its vision was to have a mixed-use transit development, and NCTD ultimately selected a proposal from Toll Brothers Apartment Living. The proposed project is a collaboration between NCTD and Toll Brothers. Tonight, the request includes the OTC development, which includes a mixed-use transit-oriented development and a modern intermodal transit facility, as well as a specific plan. The requested entitlements tonight include a zone amendment, local coastal program amendment, vesting tentative map, development plan, and regular coastal permit. This slide shows a land use. On the left, you will see the existing land use, which again is downtown, transportation utility, residential, high-density, and general commercial. And the proposed change would be a local coastal program amendment, and this would amend the land use plan of the LCP. And it would establish the Transit Center's specific plan as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. For zoning on the left, you could see the existing zoning, public utility and transportation, office professional, and medium-density residential. On the right, you will see the existing downtown district zoning. So what we propose tonight in terms of land use is the OTC-specific plan. A specific plan is a regulatory tool to implement policies of the general plan in a defined area. It establishes land use regulations, development standards, and design guidelines. The purpose and objectives of the project is to have a modern mixed-use project, support public transit through transit-oriented development, promote economic development, increase the availability of housing at different affordability levels, improve connectivity with surrounding neighborhoods, and improve the character of the surrounding community. This slide has a general overview of the project layout, with the headquarters, apartments, the intermodal transportation support, the plaza, the hotel, and public parking. And the next slide will go into more detail. So this is the proposed development program. And if you'll kind of look at the site layout in a clockwise fashion, start with Block 1, which is a hotel. I would have 170 rooms with amenities, be six stories high at the maximum height of 81 feet, and 177 parking spaces. Block 2 is the parking structure, seven stories, 611 public spaces, 190 office spaces. Block 3 is a mixed-use building, five stories. Block 4 is a residential building, which is also five stories, and it will contain 297 apartments, of which 45 would be affordable. Excuse me, going back to Block 3 for the mixed-use building, that includes 250 apartments, 37 of which will be affordable, commercial space, and parking spaces. Block 5 is the bus station, will include 12 commuter bus bays and public restrooms. And Block 6 is the NCTD customer service building, to provide customer service and also more public restrooms. And finally, Block 7 is the proposed NCTD headquarters, approximately 1,700 square foot in size, and it would house the Amtrak Customer Service Center. Here's a close-up of the proposed land use plan as just described. In response to circulation studies prepared by NCTD, the circulation framework focuses on transit-oriented and pedestrian-oriented mobility improvements and enhancements. The goals include achieving better commuter connectors, walkability, improved safety, and convenience of onsite circulation. The street alignment here is shown Cleveland Street and West Topeka Street. As you could see in the site layout, there is a relocated bus terminal from what exists today, which relates to improved onsite bus circulation. And there is park and garage access from Topeka Street, Michigan, and Missouri. OTC identified, is identified as one of eight prototype sites in the San Diego region that would demonstrate how various mobility hub features may be tailored to different communities. So the mobility hub for the proposed project is shown here. It would focus on pedestrian and bicycle connectivity through the realignment of Cleveland Street, street state improvements, enhanced crosswalks and bike parking. The mobility hub features include enhanced waiting areas, bike share, on-demand ride share, and smart parking, as well as wayfinding. The open space framework encourages outdoor lifestyles appropriate for a coastal environment. It's offering access to various public, communal, and private outdoor spaces and amenities, and these range of spaces serve a broader community, provide for the onsite residents, workers, commuters, and visitors. There's been special consideration given to enhancing the use and enjoyment of these living areas, and key aspects include a public-accessible outdoor space. For example, the station plaza would be an active hub accommodating modestly scaled events such as passive art installations and street performances, canopy trees for shade seating, special events, and then there would be street furnishing, benches, and lighting. I also want to note for the landscape plan, the city's urban forestry ordinance requires at least 12% of canopy shade, and the proposed project will bring 16%. In terms of design standards, the proposed project reflects an architectural design of Mediterranean Spanish style, the legacy of Irving Gill, and again, as stated earlier, the coastal setting. The project represents an enhanced public realm, and it reinforces the sense of place in Oceanside. It respects the view corridors, and is at the compatible scale for the environment. The implementation of the project is proposed to be in two phases. Phase 1 is shown here to demolish the blocks, construct NCTD headquarters, the public parking structure, and the residential mixed-use projects. And then Phase 2 would be to demolish the existing bus terminal, the existing office at 311 Tremont, construct the hotel, connect Cleveland Street through the site, and conduct various road improvements. There was significant analysis conducted for planning considerations. As you could see here, the bus transfer relocation was based on the NCTD feasibility study to create a clear line of sight between bus and rail service and reduce walking time. The bus circulation is controlled, the routes are controlled by NCTD, and they're based on operational needs. The circulation plan identifies accessible access points, and bus circulation was analyzed for the future roundabouts on the Coast Highway corridor project. For traffic analysis, this represents a 23% reduction in vehicle trips. Going further, for community outreach, outreach was conducted between 2022 and 2025, had significant public participation and input. Some key topics includes incorporation of public art, mobility elements, coordination with the Coast Highway Master Plan, and relocation of bus stalls and concern over bus circulation. In terms of land use, shown here are the two related policy elements. One includes the land uses being attractively planned and beneficial to the community, and the housing element, which encourages high-density housing development along transit corridors. In terms of the economic development element of the general plan, it abides by the goal to expand employment, housing, and public amenities. It encourages efficient transit-oriented development and walkability. And for the energy climate action element, it serves areas, in areas served by transit, it promotes land uses intensities that increase transit ridership. Finally, the local coastal program, there are several policies listed here, which include promoting coastal tourism, upgrading of visitor amenities, requiring all new residential developments, providing onsite parking, the city to work with NCTD and other agencies to improve alternatives to private automobile use, that the city shall maintain existing view corridors through the public's right-of-way, and the city shall encourage variety creativity and site responsiveness designed for new development. The proposed project was analyzed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. A draft EIR was available for public review last year. 24 comment letters were received on the draft EIR. Potential environmental impacts were found to be less insignificant with implementation of mitigation measures contained with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And mitigation for biological resources, tribal and cultural resources, geology and soils, hazardous and hazardous materials, and transportation have been incorporated. The OTC-specific plan would result in a transit-oriented mixed-use development consistent with the pattern of redevelopment. It would provide a modern transit center with high-density housing to increase ridership and improve transit services. The proposed general plan amendment, zone amendment, and other entitlements are consistent with the requirements of the general plan, local coastal program, and zoning ordinance. We received several correspondence from the public over the last couple days in general. I wanted to say that the main comments, traffic, surround traffic and safety, concerns about bus circulation. The Bike and Ped Committee asserts that there's too much parking and that no dedicated, and that there are no dedicated bike lanes. A comment received, was received that we are bypassing the downtown advisory committee. However, there is no reason for the, that the project has to go to the downtown advisory committee first. So both bodies, Planning Commission and DAC, will make independent recommendations to City Council. The Community Development Commission does not have authority to approve this project. The majority of development is actually outside the downtown district, which is why the proposed specific plan is to remove the site from the downtown. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt, Plan Commission Resolution 2025-15 recommending City Council certification of an EIR, approval of a general plan amendment, zone amendment, local coastal program amendment, vesting tentative map, development plan, and regular coastal permit to approve the proposed OTC project into a mixed-use development on a 10.15 acre site. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff as well as representatives of the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director. My screen's acting up, so if you have questions, please give me a nod. Any questions for the Director? I can't see if you...
At this point, the applicant has 20 minutes to provide a presentation, and I will hand it off to them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
The pros.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. It's always a pleasure to speak in all of our amazing North County cities. I'm Sean Donaghy. I'm the CEO of the North County Transit San Diego Railroad. Very thankful to be able to provide the city of Oceanside with bus, rail, and paratransit services. The Oceanside Transit Center specifically is surrounded by tenures of parking, as you saw on the slide, and it is really close to a robust downtown area. Since 2016, our Board of Directors has had a vision of leveraging assets that could help springboard communities through shared visions. This isn't the only community that we have development similar to this working through. We're activating all of our spaces and leveraging partnerships to improve transit for all. Across our service area, through these projects, we're shortening bus-to-rail connections and improving rider experiences by enhancing amenities, wayfinding, placemaking, and connecting multimodal pathways. The Oceanside Transit Center plays a critical role in this corridor-wide strategy. It's the gateway that connects the inland areas to the coast, south to San Diego, and north to Orange County and Los Angeles. There's an opportunity in Oceanside to build the future of public transit and set the standard for Southern California. The redevelopment transit can benefit by improving overall experience for riders, residents, and visitors. What used to be a one-dimensional weight for your train or bus is now a robust transit district, including access to meeting spaces, restaurant or shopping destinations, community events, and opportunities for significant job creation. I'm going to let our Planning and Development Director, Lillian Doherty, expand on these
Across our two corridors, east to west and north to south, there are 11 projects prioritized for redevelopment, ranging from one to two acres and as large as 18 acres. Individually, each of these sites is a small community, but together, they become a village of over 2,000 homes connected by rail. They are gateway points expanding cities, connect, connected by rail. They connect people to jobs, education, healthcare, shopping, beaches, families, and friends, all without the need of a car, reducing congestion on your SR78, which I know we all feel. Many will tell you, that's not how California is set up, but that's not how we are today. Every journey, every hard thing starts with a step in the right direction. That's why we are where we are today. As Sean mentioned, OTC is a special project for us. It is the first project on our corridor and features many of our most critical connections. We have been studying this site since 2008, and I brought that study with me today. In this study, we describe many of our most important things that we hope to accomplish in this site. Improving line of sight between our modes, shortening walk times so that our bus and rail riders, the most vulnerable, mothers with strollers, people that have difficulty walking, people that are in wheelchairs, people that have difficulty walking that eight to 10 minutes. With the feedback of the public, we understand that we could redevelop the station and make it easier to purchase tickets, activate public spaces, improve wayfinding, and provide an overall better rider experience. This is an opportunity. We also recognize multimodal connections as critical considerations to closing that last-mile gap. Lastly, it was always our intention to ensure that our vision aligns with our partners with the city of Oceanside, without which this vision cannot be a reality. With that, I'll turn it over to our partner, project partner, Arlene Tendak.
Hi, everyone. My name's Arlene Tendak, and I manage the community outreach on behalf of Toll Brothers and the rest of the project team. As Lillian said, we've been at this for a long time. We started our outreach in the summer of '22, and that continued up until today. We hosted eight public meetings, did dozens of one-on-one and small group meetings, individual stakeholder presentations at different groups like the Bike and Ped Committee, OCNA, The Chamber, Visit Oceanside, across the board. We tried to talk to anyone who would hear from us, really. And that feedback really could be divided into these four key topics. So tonight, I'll show you what our project team has come up with to really meet the objective that Lillian and Sean... objective that Lillian and Sean spoke to. The biggest challenge of our outreach program was to find balance between the feedback we were hearing from the community and some of the comments that you received over the last few days and NCTD's priorities. Sometimes those things were in conflict, so making sure we could find harmony between them was really what we were trying to do, and in which case, we would identify project modifications that would respond to those comments. The biggest thing for us is enhancing the transit experience. Darlene spoke to the mobility hub elements, so I won't get into all that, but really looking at how we activate this area in the yellow, that's really what we saw as the core of our transit operations and really opportunities for enhancement. The areas in blue are identified for public art. Those locations will really punctuate the wayfinding. Right now, if you go onsite and you don't know your way around, it's really difficult to find a human being or just to navigate this space. So these improvements are really intended to make it easier to traverse the transit center and just more enjoyable. There's also about 25,000 square feet of retail in there, so small shops and services, so that as you're waiting to catch a ride or picking up a friend, you can actually enjoy your time there at the transit center versus, you know, hurrying through. The area identified by the red block is the bus-to-rail connectivity, which we've heard a lot about from the public. This area is a zoomed-in view of that location, relocating bus operations with central to NCTD's requirements of Toll Brothers, but we empathize with our neighbors and their concern over what that relocation will mean for them. So we did reconfigure that southerly border of the project site. On the left-hand side, you can see what we initially presented at our first meeting, and then the evolution of that after hearing from the community. So the big takeaway is our reconfiguration of that median to increase the greenstraining there. You can also see how the building is extended out over that median to further kind of shield This is the enhanced customer service center. This is also a big give to the community. Initially, this center was in the first floor of the residential areas, but the residents of the community told us that they wanted to see a standalone facility. This was really an opportunity to reimagine what a grand central station or traditional terminal experience could be in this kind of an infill setting. You know, a large terminal wouldn't necessarily make sense here, and so really looking at how could we create this jewel box right in the center that's visible from all different modes, walking, biking, car, bus, train, and really make a welcoming place for the center. This is the reverse side of that building. Tried to be mindful of all the different angles and how people were arriving at the transit center, and our architects and our landscape architects did a great job in really creating this beautiful and welcoming place that didn't overwhelm the space, but it's still cool and modern and interesting. The white pillar that you can see in the background is a 60-foot tower. That is just a placeholder. It's intended to be designed through further community input and a public RFP process that would allow Oceanside's arts community to help us develop that or design that. It's visible as far as the coast, so it has the opportunity to be this really cool, interesting beacon, as well as another monument space for our wayfinding program at the center. We also enhanced the waiting areas and provided additional social gathering spaces. So we've widened all of the sidewalks to give opportunities for people to hang out, meet, connect while they're, you know, I think Mike McCann from Toll has said, kind of, you wouldn't mind if your train's a little late, because then you get to hang out and have a beer or grab a sandwich. So it was really finding ways to bring this site to life. This shows the aerial, and again, really that grand central station, Oceanside style. So you have really park-like station plaza that's sandwiched between the customer service center and that iconic tower. You have all the retail and just an interesting mix of colors and textures and materials that really brings this space to life. There's also opportunities for social gathering and light programmatic elements in the station plaza. We reconfigured this area not only to add the customer service center, but also to add more turf and more canopy trees. Initially, there was a lot more hardscaping, and so we pivoted away from that to develop what you see here. We also met with local members of the environmental community here. There's a key, a few key sustainability initiatives that we've brought through. I won't talk about all of them, but we will be 100% electric. We have developed a parking management program for the site. Parking is a very conflicted topic for us, so trying to find an operations program that worked for the community and that worked for NCTD and for Toll was a big feat for us. We've also agreed to enhance TDM measures that'll be implemented on day one, which includes pronto cards for all residents and retail employees. Pronto cards are transit cards, for those of you who aren't aware of that, and more. And last but not least, the mixed-income housing. Apologies to Toll, but this is not an apartment project. I know we've kind of joked about that a little bit, and members of the community might lead you to believe that this is just an apartment project, but that's certainly not the case. There's two important topics or key issues related to the housing. The first is the inclusionary. We have 15% dedicated for affordable housing. That's 10% for low and 15%, or I'm sorry, and 5% for moderate. And that is exceeding the requirement at the time of our application. And the second is that these units are going to fund the public improvements that are planned for the project. So, sorry. So these make it possible for us to do all of the other things that this project is planning. These units take what is currently today, just a surface-level parking lot, and transit transition it into a vibrant, walkable, welcoming place and gateway for your downtown. This project provides $100 million in public transit improvements, and this is all being funded through private investment into public transit. It's aimed at enhancing NCTD operations, increasing ridership, and really just improving connectivity for this area. It does align with Oceanside's objectives for smart growth and affordable housing and does provide infrastructure improvements, including upgrades to the existing municipal storm water system, which currently has some deficiencies. In conclusion, I could talk about this project all night. I'm really proud of the work that we've done here, not just me, but our whole team. And we're all here to answer questions. But with that, I just thank you and thank staff. Thank NCTD for the opportunity to be part of this redevelopment. It's doesn't, it's not lost on us how big of an opportunity it is, so thank you.
So speakers tonight, how many do we have?
Chair Morsey, one quick announcement to the applicant. You have seven minutes and 26 seconds left for rebuttal, if you choose to use so. Excuse me. And Chair Morsey, we have 16 electronic slips and two written slips. Would you like to do the usual three minutes or?
Say again?
Our questions first.
Well, what we, what we'll do is, we'll have the presenters come in, and then the rebuttal, and then if we have questions, I think we could do it that time. So we have 16 speakers. Three minutes, two minutes? What do you think? Three minutes, let's do it.
Okay. Thank you. Let's proceed. Let me try to get this up on the screen. I apologize, we've had some technical difficulties. There we go. Yay. All right. Please come forward in the order your name appears on the screen. State your name clearly for the chamber recording as well as the gallery, please. You will have three minutes to speak. Reminder, we have two lecterns, so if you would like to pre-stage while you're waiting for the person before you to speak, we appreciate that. And first up, we've got Jane Marshall, followed by Kevin Hamm. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jane Marshall, and tonight I'm representing OCNA, Oceanside Coastal Neighborhood Association. And it's true that we have talked with both Arlene and representatives of NCTD, but we feel that some of our grave concerns just fell on deaf ears. Primarily, a lot of our neighbors, which are south of that property, are now what was considered initially an emergency exit on Missouri, is now the only exit. And in addition to that, even though we continually bring to their attention some of the impossible ways that buses could not turn south with bumpouts on the Coast Highway development or navigated traffic circle at Michigan, they seem to say, oh, it's all right. It'll all be fine. And we're concerned about that because that directly impacts not only the current street traffic, it also impacts the future 547 residents and all the cars that they may have or whatever vehicles they may have. It also impacts all the bike riders that use Tremont to avoid the traffic on Coast Highway and all the new pedestrians, not only from the redeveloped neighborhood just south of the project, but also the new ones and whoever is going to be using the transit center. So our concern is, is that the traffic plan has not been well thought out, and though we have tried to address it with them directly, we have tried to address it with city staff. Sometimes they wouldn't even show up. City staff was there. We feel that they have just totally ignored it, and what I just saw is that their opinion about some of these issues is that they'll manage it. And I guess it's not significant if you don't live there, but if you do live there, then it is really significant. And as the neighborhood, representing the neighborhood, OCNA wants to make sure that the Planning Commission realizes that we were trying to work, the neighborhood's been trying to work very diligently on some very easy alternatives, and just we were shined on. So we hope that you'll give this project, it really should be recirculated for public opinion. We hope that you consider these and ask for recirculation so more people can give their opinions and concerns about this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kevin Hamm. I am a South Cleveland Street resident. I am also and have experience in award-winning programs, state, country, and internationally in economic development and transportation. Just a little bit about background. I'm going to start with Ask, which is, don't allow buses from Missouri, South Cleveland, or North Michigan, and contain the bus circulation inside the development and route all bus traffic as is currently done within the development. And I have to say, I do appreciate what Sean, Lillian, and Arlene talked about. This is a great project. Many of our neighbors support this, as I do. I see lots of benefit. However, I have to say that myself and many of my neighbors, when we purchased our homes, we asked questions of the city. And as Director Nancondro said, you know, there's a specific change here, a specific plan change, and there's a reason for that. And when I looked at, as someone that has experience statewide and nationally in economic development and transportation, the design of the site did not allow this type of development. I was told by the city, in talking to the city staff, I've known many of your city managers, many of your economic developers, many of your staff members, council members, I was told that there was no plan considered for the movement of the bus bay. So, and furthermore, in talking to Matt Tucker, who used to be the executive director, that position is now known as the CEO, and Tracy Foster, who is sitting behind me here, I was told that this would go out for public input, or the plan went forward. And in September of 2020, during the pandemic, they entered into an agreement with Toll Brothers that did not allow for public input, and they had reduced participation. So, you know, I've heard that we're a bit disgruntled, and I have to say why we are is that public outreach never happened. Late in the process, we found that the buses were going to be exiting Missouri. You could ask Rob Dombrowski that I actually found that the plan showed that there was no exit. And he went to the applicant, and the applicant said, oops, our mistake, there should be an exit. When the coaster platform was built, we were told that they were going to do shore power. NCTD never implemented the shore power. Further, when we raised concerns about the issues that exist here, as well as concerns about the project to make it better, which they have, they started running buses on South Cleveland Street, and they moved the coaster engine south. So I can tell you that we're trying to work with them, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and fellow Commissioners. My name is Lane Stewart. My wife and I reside at 425 South Tremont Street, approximately 300 to 400 feet from the south edge of the proposed development. We understand North County Transit Districts need to monetize and update the transit center, and we basically only have a couple of issues with this. The majority of the project, we're completely in favor of. And the first is the routing of the southbound buses onto Missouri Avenue. Missouri Avenue, here's the, if you want to, that camera. Missouri Avenue is a narrow, is a narrow avenue and proposed ingress/egress for also the about 300 of the 500 new apartments. And the intersection of South Coast Highway and Missouri will be one lane with a bulbout on the south side of the, and a concrete median divider when the Coast Highway project is completeable. And illustrations of the turning radius of buses going around the bulbout with a center divider there on a one-lane road makes it questionable. And Seagate Drive, because of its width and the presence of stoplights and left turn lanes on South Coast Highway, makes much better sense for a bus route, and that is the road currently in use. And this is an illustration of the routing that we have suggested going through that keeps the bus circulation on the property, utilizes where the buses, the ingress and egress of the bus routes go right now. And also, trains, buses, and cars pollute, and there's no mitigation proposed to address the impact of all the transit activity being moved to the southwest corner of the project, specifically when the trains, there are four distinct train services that idle at the platform, and their APUs, the auxiliary power units that keep all the electronics running, emitting black carbon, specifically the Sprinter, Coaster, Amtrak, and Metrolink. Sprinter service is also projected to double its service future to every 15 minutes. We asked the developer to install shore power so that the trains could plug in while at the stations, like they do at airports and as required in Union Station and a lot of other transit areas across the country, and this request fell on deaf ear. With the bus bays moved to the southern location, bus exhaust will be concentrated in the same areas as the trains, and as designed, the buses will accelerate from standstill four times before heading south on Coast Highway. Start up to leave the bus bays, left turn from the bus bay onto Missouri, stopping at Missouri and Tremont, stopping at Missouri and Coast Highway before accelerating down South Coast Highway. Acceleration from the standstill produces the most exhaust. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Caitlin Lim, and I am here to speak in support of the Oceanside Transit Center redevelopment project. As a member of Strong Towns Oceanside, I strongly support this project as it brings our city center closer to the kind of place I would want to visit on the weekend if I lived in San Diego or LA. Furthermore, I am excited that I could visit here on the train without relying on a car to do what I want to do. The years that I lived in a car-free and transit-oriented city were some of the best years of my life, and I look forward to a day where I could live car-free in my hometown as well. I appreciate that this project provides a type of housing unit that is not single-family detached homes to an area where density makes the most sense in a vibrant downtown city center. This allows people to do everything they would want to do without relying on cars to take them places, including buying food at the farmer's market, going to school, attending city council meetings, getting a haircut, or running at the beach. Increasing the housing availability in an area where people, in an area where people do not have to drive to do these things will vastly decrease the environmental impact of each individual and help the city move towards their environmental goals. Additionally, this project brings about $100 million of infrastructure improvements to the area. This includes improvements for storm drain repairs in adjacent neighborhoods that are outside the project's footprint. This is another reason why I support the project. Though this project is only required to reserve 10% of the units to be affordable housing, this project has decided to set aside 15% in line with what the Oceanside government is required, is requesting. 15% of these units at both the Oceanside Transit Center and 810 Mission Avenue locations. I would like to request for the number of affordable I would like to request for the number of affordable units not to be increased. This is because increasing the units would provide an additional financial burden on the development company. The Toll Brothers have stated that increasing the number of low-income units by just six units would cost the project an estimated $3 million. That balance would likely have to be made up by the city itself or another outside grant. I really want this project to be built as planned, so I support the current plan, which has been proposed.
Thank you.
Okay. Honorable Chair and Honorable Commissioners, my name is Mike Volokh. I live at 1800 Bayberry Drive. Our 2030 climate stabilization requirement is to emit greenhouse gas at a level that is no more than 40% below our 1990s level, as specified by SB 32. Now, AB 32 tasked the California Air Resources Board, CARB, to create the plan to do this. The result is the CARB scoping plan. Cars emit the most greenhouse gas. In 2030, there will still be mostly gasoline-powered cars on our roads. Therefore, CARB had to specify a 25% reduction in driving by 2030 with respect to the 2018 level. A lot. We are very car-centric, and yet, CARB created a viable plan. It says that pricing is essential. We must price nearly all car parking by 2030. The currently planned operation of the OTC fails to comply with the scoping plan, despite letters requesting compliance. The scoping plan is, after all, a plan to avoid climate stabilization. It's a plan for human survival. Detailed car parking policy statements were submitted in response to the OTC's draft environmental impact report. Using the final environmental impact report comment letter designations to refer to the response letters, detailed car parking reform statements were included in A3, and that's from Oceanside Citizens Committee '07, and that's a Sierra Club letter, '04, a Preserve Calvera letter from Catherine Pruditt, and I9, which was my letter. At least two letters, mine and the letter from Catherine Pruditt, explained the importance of the CARB scoping plan. A non-conforming Oceanside Transit Center would be contributing to climate destabilization. And that's true. I love the project, but that is true. It has to be operated better. Therefore, the OTC's environmental impact would exceed any reasonable significance threshold. The car parking measures must be functional by 2030. That's what CARB scoping plan is all about, and the law is all about. And that's from the climate side, 2030, and what we have to do. There is time to do that. 2030 is not tomorrow. We've got some years. They've got some years, and they can do it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is Manny Rodriguez. I'm here on behalf of Ride SD. Ride SD is a C3 nonprofit public education organization focused on educating the county on transportation issues region-wide. And we're here to voice our support and our hundreds of members of support for this project. When it comes to transportation, we believe this project will help reduce congestion, because people will live by the train, and those people who would have maybe lived in apartments elsewhere in Oceanside or North County are more likely to take the train and then reduce that congestion on our nearby freeways. Furthermore, we support the location of the new bus stops. You know, we rode the bus, sorry, the train here today, and it's a very long walk from one side to the other. I can't imagine, you know, being a senior mobility challenged, getting off at the train, and then having five minutes to make the bus on the other side. You're not making it in five minutes if you, you know, not very able-bodied. So, on behalf of seniors and folks with accessibility issues, we're very supportive of the relocation of the bus stop, and we can see why it was one of NCTD's, you know, you know, non-negotiables in this, because, you know, it is an accessibility issue, and we want to make sure that all populations are able to use transit, especially folks who can't drive, which is many of our senior citizens. I also want to personally say that, you know, we have an opportunity here to provide a lot of affordable housing. The site is currently a vague, underutilized parking lot. And we have another home builder coming in and saying, we're going to build, you know, a few hundred homes. We're also going to build over 80 deed-restricted affordable. That is a lot better than the zero affordable that currently exists on that parking lot. So, you know, personally, and also on behalf of Ride San Diego, we urge you to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Ethan Paul. I'm a student at California, or Cal State San Marcos, and a former resident of Escondido. I'd like to speak in favor of this project being approved. I think it's really important that we recognize that it's very common for projects like this to get delayed, and these delays have been happening kind of all over the state right now for a long time. Particularly with the funding issues, certain affordable projects in San Diego have been delayed, for example. It really is a big deal that we might be able to get 80 units built near transport, good transportation in Oceanside, near downtown, which is such a vibrant space. If I remember correctly, one, this project would be one-third of the total housing Oceanside's built in the past decade. It really is a significant impact, and I hope everyone recognizes the importance of this project. One huge benefit of this, that the Toll Brothers did a great job on, is including a diversity of uses in this project. One issue that often TOD projects have is having just a bunch of housing and maybe one or two other use cases. This leads to times during the day when their site is empty, and it can be uncomfortable for, for transit riders or residents and feel unsafe. So the inclusion of retail, and housing, and hotels really is a huge benefit, and should help people feel much more comfortable in the space. One concern, please add biking facilities. Oceanside is a great biking city. There are a lot of kids that use bikes. I bike around here. It's a great way to get here, particularly when, early in the morning, if you want to take MetroLink up and bus frequencies aren't as good, often biking is the fastest way to get here. That can be a big deal. One other concern is if this project doesn't go through, and instead, we try to do something with a higher percentage of affordability. I know that is a concern for some members. In the current budget issues with the state of California, we're unlikely to see grants from the state or federal level. I'm really glad that the Toll Brothers managed to get the project to have 15% affordable instead of 10% affordable, and I hope that we will appreciate that and take advantage of it so that we can have those units of housing and not have this delayed for more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Chair and Commissioners, my name is Thomas LaCroix, and I was born here. I grew up here. I have a home here. I'm right, or I'm speaking on behalf of Strong Towns Oceanside, a local group dedicated to making Oceanside safer, more affordable, equitable, financially responsible, and we support this project. It will invest over $100 million into transit improvements, and it will build housing directly on the biggest transit station in North County. Will add over 500 housing units to our city. That's housing that we need. It's housing, it's also going to add tax revenue that we. In the past seven years, we have built under 50 low-income housing units. This project will build that many in the project. In that same time, we have averaged about 60 moderate income units a year. This will build about a third of that yearly average in one project. If we deny this project, it will be death by a thousand cuts. Take out some housing, give us a clock tower, take out a park, because homeless people might use it, put in trees instead, give us more housing, build more parking, actually, build less parking, unbundle it. We have a million different things that we want, and this is trying to solve a lot at the same time. But it can't solve everything, and they have listened. As a resident, as somebody who lives here, I feel they have listened. If we want something from people investing in our communities, our building codes, our inclusionary requirements, our zoning, our circulation element, safety standards, those need to mean something. We've, we've decided what those are as a city of Oceanside, and we have NCTD partnering with this project to tell us what the circulation, the circulation element needs, the bus routes, how to make the bus stations more accessible, you know, consolidate them, make the walk less from, from the trains to the buses, put signage up. You know, they're doing all of that, and we have given them those rules. They're following them. So if we don't like it, we should change those rules and make it transparent for future people to try and build here. Yeah, we don't have to like the developer. We just have to give them clear rules. So I just hope that we can do that. And if we let this slip through our hands, or if we, you know, death by a thousand cuts, then we will have nothing. And that will not, that will be bad. So I, I support this project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Teddy Badio. My grandfather moved to Oceanside in 1918. He bought property down on Cleveland Street. My other grandfather, he bought, he moved here in 1935, and he bought a house from Sears, and he had it built. Took him two years, and I live in that house now on South Nevada Street. And the reason why they came here was to give their children some traction to have a better life. And we've all done well. I have 75 cousins on one side and another 30, so there's one on every corner, it seems like. So we've been here for a long time. The beauty is, Oceanside is beautiful in itself. I want to speak to you about, geographically speaking, we're going to put some big buildings down, and we're going to block the view of our ocean. We have residents up here, geographically speaking, from Harbor Bluff all the way to Stanley Street, that have a great view of the ocean. In the evening, we can hear the waves. During the day, we can see the pelicans. In the evening, we can hear, we can hear the seals barking, you know, all these beautiful things we can see. But as an example, we have two beautiful hotels down by the pier, and they do take, they block out a lot of view from the residents. So as an example, right now, if you go down to the Transit Center, they have two large towers that say, hey, you know, we're here. Can you imagine a curtain of buildings that high blocking the residents from all this hill right up here? We won't have Oceanside. We'll have a side of bullying. We won't see the view. We'll miss out. Yes, we'll, we'll cater to transportation, but I don't believe a five, six-story building in a beacon, you know, that's 60 feet tall or some population out in the ocean will see it. Just to consider the height, and to consider the people that have been here for many years, decades, that have put their taxes for decades to help with the infrastructure here in Oceanside, to help build this place and do what it is today. You know, we have generational families here. But my children, I have six, only two live within the city. They can no longer afford to live here. They want to put affordable housing, but I don't know what affordable housing price point will be when you're near the beach. I just want to say thank you for your consideration, and I want to thank the citizens of Oceanside, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission and Commissioner Ross Solis, for the opportunity to speak here today and voice my concerns about the project. I'm Jim Felons, and I live at 401 South Cleveland Street, about 50 feet from the project site. Let me start off by saying, I really like the project, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to our community. But we do, I do voice concerns about the egress of buses leaving onto Missouri Street. I'm appearing here today jointly representing the Coastal Townlofts Maintenance Corporation, 28 units immediately south of the project, and the Oceanside Streets Association. I'm asking, again, that the bus egress be moved from its current planned location on Missouri Street because of the impact to my immediate neighborhood. The proposed design, that the real cost will be borne by myself and my neighbors immediately south of the project, as well as neighbors along Tremont, Missouri, and Cleveland. Currently, traffic entering and leaving our neighborhood are 90% cars and trucks traveling to and from our homes, with about 10% estimated for delivery and service vehicles. The community, the neighborhood, is going to be completely transformed when we move approximately 100 to 150 buses moving in and out of the terminal daily. Every six to eight minutes, there'll be a bus leaving on the street of Missouri that currently is not used for that. And Missouri was never designed for bus traffic. I handed out a package that I distributed to the board here, showing the difference between Missouri and the other, and Michigan, and Seagate, and the widths of the streets. And our neighborhood was never designed for buses. So I just want to make the point that it's going to materially affect the whole character of the neighborhood, and we are opposed to the bus being, buses being routed out onto Missouri Street. So that's basically all I wanted to say, representing the community and the neighbors, and in particular, myself, because my home is right on Missouri Street. My garage exits onto the cul-de-sac, right next to the street itself, onto the street. And I have deep concerns about my having fair access and having to compete with buses on a road that was never designed for that. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today and voice these concerns.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calvera. This transit-oriented development got a lot of things right. We especially appreciate that they've done a meaningful transportation demand management plan. But we're puzzled by their failure to make a couple of other simple changes that would be essentially no cost to them that could have a huge benefit. Have you ever been near a window and experienced a bird strike? Sometimes that bird shakes it off in a few seconds and flies away, but most of the times, those strikes are fatal to birds. There's a simple fix. We know what the fix is. It's a type of glass used at windows. So we ask you to please add compliance with the voluntary bird-friendly building code as a project condition. We used to say we needed to do things to date to reduce the impacts of climate change for our grandchildren. Then we started saying for our children. Now we know it's for us. How many millions of Americans were impacted in the last year by wildfires and floods and heat waves? But little changes can make a big difference. Those two-stroke gas engines used for our yard equipment are a simple thing to fix, and our state law started phasing those out years ago. As of January 24, you can no longer even buy them in California. But many of that old polluting equipment is still in use. We ask you to require this project to reduce, restrict the use of all gas-powered lawn equipment. Most landscapers will already have done that by the time this is built. Putting that restriction in would just ensure it. The last issue is really not for the developer. It's for the city. The developer has done what they're obligated to do to address traffic failures from those over 6,200 trips a day. Look at the attachment to the staff report that details fair share fees. Money sitting in the bank does nothing to reduce traffic congestion, air pollution, and greenhouse gases. Even worse, six of the roadway segments and two of the intersection failures can't be fixed by capacity improvement. Instead, the developer, quote, pays an in-lu fee towards multimodal transportation improvements in the downtown area at the discretion of the city, end quote. Our city has no multimodal transportation improvement program for the downtown area. So paying fees for a program that does not exist does not help anybody. We will all still be sitting in the traffic congestion, breathing bad air, and adding greenhouse gas. We urge you to recommend the city council establish such a program so that these can be used in a way that actually benefits this community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Joan Bachmann. First, I want to thank the applicant for including native plants, trees that are actually on the street and a parkway, thank you, and the tree canopy. However, I must demand that we replace the fountain grass with deer grass. The reason for this is the weedy grass along all our roads, highly flammable, is the fountain grass. The species reverts to the original species, even though it's red, so that part doesn't matter. So we really need to get that grass out of here. Please replace that. Citynerd is a popular YouTube guy who says, "Most people live in cities, so how do we make cities better?" Well, there's two things we need to do. One is we got to stop inviting cars west of I-5. There's no I-5 West. Coast Highway is not that. We have a plan in place for that. 1,600 parking spaces, I-80, whatever it does, is a lot of parking spaces, and that's in addition to the city parking structure that's already there. So that's a lot of cars coming. And cars are really spoiled brats. The more you give them, the more they take. Costco parking lots are not big enough for people, okay? So we need to really stop. It's time to stop thinking about being so car-centric and offering other alternatives for that. Tonight was a great time to drive to the meeting here. The restaurants are closed. There's not a whole lot of people downtown. Friday night, I do not drive here. I live six blocks away. I don't drive here on Friday or Saturday night. So that's the behavior we need to encourage by providing less for cars. The other thing we need is actual traffic calming. Traffic calming is things that allow cars to move continuously but slowly. It's not about the number of cars. It's about keeping them moving, but slowly, very slowly. So stop signs don't do that. You zoom up, boom, stop, screech, then zoom down the street to the next one, screech. So that doesn't work. Humps and bumps are just irritating. Nothing was solved in Fire Mountain with humps and bumps. I'm sorry. They still have the same limited number of entrances and exits. So we really need to fix that. Diane just mentioned a fund. Maybe we could have a fund for actual traffic calming. Mid-block bump outs with street trees in the street would be helpful. I saw a truck parked on what should have been a planted parkway today. It was parked on it. That's why we need to preserve our parkways. We need them plantable, and we got to get the concrete out of them. So these are the things that help traffic in our neighborhoods. Inviting in more cars, providing more parking spaces does not help slowing down cars. Keeping them continuously moving is what helps, and it's why many subdivisions simply will never have good traffic. They will complain about traffic forever because it actually can't be solved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm commenting in support of this project. Dear Commissioners, I believe that this location is ideal for a transit-oriented project like this. It is in downtown Oceanside and is currently a large parking lot. This project serves as a connection between the transit center and the downtown, and will have many amenities such as restaurants, green space, a hotel, offices, and all the customer-oriented spaces for transit users. I also believe that this is a great project for consolidating transit service. So currently, it takes many minutes, up to 10 minutes, to get from the coaster to the bus base. That is simply too long. It should not take you that long to get to a bus in a place that is a connection. So this consolidating all these bus services over by where the coaster and sprinter currently terminate, I believe is an amazing improvement. Also, I would like to comment just on the sheer capacity and improvements that are being made to the transit service in this area. There are plans for 20-minute coaster, coaster train every 20 minutes by 2050. There are plans for a surf liner train every 30 minutes by 2050, and one every hour within the next few years. So these services are becoming very frequent, and they're going to get better used as they become more frequent, and the trip becomes shorter because of infrastructure improvements further south. So having this ideally-located transit-oriented development is amazing. I would like to comment on the need for bike infrastructure here. Many people would bike to this transit center. Many people already do, and I believe there needs to be a dedicated space for bikes so that they feel safe doing so. Also, I do want to say the amount of affordable housing they have managed to fit into this project is amazing. You rarely see a 15% affordable project that is a for-profit project. It's rarely done, and the reason for that is that it is expensive. It is very uncommon for that to pencil out. So I think they are doing a huge favor here, being able to make that pencil. So they did mention that adding six more affordable units would cost the project nearly $3 million more, and I think that's very important to note, that even a small increase would cause this project to be less likely to pencil out. And one last thing is, I believe this project should have less parking. I put that aside, but I don't think there should be an increase in parking for sure, and less parking if possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Spencer Domein Sanford. I'm 15 years old, and I would like to show my support for this project. While I do agree with some of the concerns regarding biking, there could be better bike infrastructure. There is already existing bike infrastructure on the west side of the tracks that offer bike parking and a safe bike route on the Coastal Rail Trail, which is planned to be expanded over time. And as with the parking, I was looking at Instagram comments about this project, and people were concerned that there wasn't enough parking. There's plenty of parking, not just with the existing side on the west side of the tracks, all the existing parking over there, but with the new subterranean parking and above-bound parking garage. I don't see that as an issue. So in general, parking shouldn't be a debate in this cause. It could even be reduced in some situations. But this is a great transit-oriented development project. I love transportation. I love public transport especially. As someone who rail fans and looks at trains quite often at the Oceanside Transit Center, I love to see that this transit center has improved. I grew up in the city. I was raised here, and I really enjoy just being able to go outside and see my city improve over time. And this especially helps my hobbies, but it can affect everybody in North County and even in other areas of Los Angeles, San Diego. With the rail projects, the Surf Line is the second most popular rail corridor in the United States, just behind the Northeast Corridor, and it's amazing to see that projects and transit-oriented development are being incorporated into it to further encourage people to use this source of transit instead of just using a car. I mean, we have the I-5 commuter corridor and all that stuff, but it encourages a different source of transit that's less polluting and is much more efficient. So in general, I support this project, and I would appreciate if the planning commission does as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Pat Torona, and I live at 415 South Nevada. And first, I want to just congratulate Spencer. It's nice to see youth involved in activism in their community. Really think that's just great. I agree with all the statements previously made by my neighbors, Kevin Hamm, Jane Marshall, Elaine Stewart, and James Felonz regarding the bus circulation in my neighborhood. I'm brought three houses down from Missouri. I also, I think, feel that we should try and get back to using Seagate for ingress and egress for the bus circulation. Secondly, I agree with Teddy Badio and his comments about the height and obstructing the jewel of our view of the ocean. And thirdly, I didn't hear anything about EV chargers, but I'm hoping that there will be EV chargers in the parking structure for this complex. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ansermio J. Costrada. A.J. Estrada. I am the political director for the San Diego Building and Construction Trades Council. We represent 22 affiliated unions, around 35,000 workers across this region, many of whom actually live right here in Oceanside. Our members are skilled and trained. They pride themselves on that knowledge and the understanding of their craft, and they understand that the benefits of having those skills put to work on projects like OTC, a public project that, if done right from start to finish, could truly serve the Oceanside community and the region at large. But there is a cost to getting this right, to not getting this right, apologies. There is a cost to not getting this right, to not prioritizing either local hire or ensuring the strongest labor standards on the project. When enforceable local hire provisions are established, certainty is created for this community and this region. And that certainty, certainly that public dollar, which will inevitably flow into this project, will stay in this community. Under local hire provisions, those public dollars will be paid to San Diegans, residents of Oceanside, and not to Texans or Arizonians that come to California to earn California wages, only to take those earnings back to their own respective states when the work is done. We need those workers to organize their own communities, their own states, to get the wages they need, so don't have to come to California to take our public dollars out of our communities. That is what local hire does, ensures public dollars are paid to local workers who will spend those dollars in our small businesses, at our community events, and so on. And a final note on labor standards. In these United States, the construction industry represents about 20% of workplace deaths, 19.5% to 20%. Those deaths are the highest in any industry. Of that 20%, 85% to 90% of those deaths occur on non-union construction sites. We should implement local hire and ensure that San Diegans, the Oceanside residents that would then build this project are protected with the highest labor standards. Once again, not getting this right has consequences. Getting this right should start right now.
Thank you.
Chair Morsey, that will conclude our electronic speakers. I'm going to move to the handwritten ones, and then we can open it up for anybody else who'd like to come forward. The two written slips I have, first up is going to be Brenda Battali. Please, again, announce your name for the record and for the recording, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And next, after her, will be Jimmy Naught.
Hey, my name is Brenda Battali, and we live in Oceanside Terrace, which is at 301 Mission Avenue. When we first moved here, there was all parking lots in front of us. We just saw straight to the ocean. Since then, a lot of development has come in, and it's been nice. We've enjoyed it. We have the hotels and other things. And I'm a frequent user of the train, so I do appreciate having the train and having it be an improved look. So on the whole, I'm in favor of what the transit system is proposing. And I'm also pleased that it sounds like, as the presentation I heard, that there will be an office there to purchase tickets. Two years ago, Governor Newsom closed our transit system, which is, or the ticket office, which has been difficult for Spanish-speaking people and for people with disabilities. So opening that again will be great. My one concern, when they built Pierview right across from us, Pierview South, it has 110 units. And just now, you voted in putting in the Regal Center, which is going to be 330 units. This project is going to have 550 units. We come out, we egress out onto Seagate, and that's two blocks is two lanes, and then it becomes a one lane. With the parking structure and all those people egressing out of that, including the Regal Center, some are going to have to go left because it's too close to Coast Highway, or go right, and some can go left. Even now, sometimes when we leave the building, they hit that stoplight at the corner at a running stop, and sometimes it takes a lot of time just to be brave enough to get into the traffic to go out. Now, if we have a lot more traffic, it just makes it more difficult. So it's easy to plan a project and how pretty it's going to look, and how nice it's going to be, and everyone's going to love it, but we need to look at the street fixture and how that goes. And I disagree with Mr. Lane, I'm sorry, but he wants to come and bring everything out onto Seagate. We can't do that. We can't have everybody coming in and out of Seagate. We'll never get out of here. So I think it is important to look at a structure and look at how it affects everybody. We want it to be nice. We want it to be an improvement to the community, but we don't want it to be a deficit as well. So I think that's important for you people, and for you people to encourage the city to look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Commissioners, Jimmy Naught, 127 Sherri Lane. And in the interest of disclosure, I was also the North County Transit District's T-PAC chairman and representative from Oceanside and Oceanside Senior Citizen of the Year. I have a few questions and comments. First comment is the size of the report and the notification of the public. Many of the citizens of the city were only notified of this project this last Sunday, yesterday, and I received telephone calls to that effect. Mostly, they were senior citizens. Who was the size of the report? The report was thousands of pages, and therefore, there was no time for them to digest and provide substantial or reflective comment. So I would request that you delay any decisions so that the public can have adequate time to provide input. Now to address a few concerns. The noise from the trains and other vehicles in the area requires dampeners. They don't seem to be included. The parking has, for, you have to look at reality. Things are not likely to change in the short term, and apartment owners have visitors. There should be a remote site for visitor parking. There also needs to be an indoor public meeting location unless North County Transit District wants to include their offices for such a meeting location. There are also, if you look at the permits, the permits are conditional or have other special limited approval status. You have the canyonizing of the area and the projected other building areas that will take and create congestion. People like their freedom, their personal freedom, and security comes along with that. That has not been sufficiently addressed. There will be a need for information boards, electronic information boards that the city of Oceanside has a problem with, plus also speaker systems and directional signage. That will also create some issue. Low income. What is low income? And I notice I have one second left. I have other issues.
Thank you.
Chair Morsey, that concludes our paper slips, but I would just like to make a quick announcement. Some people might have signed up electronically. It does lock you out, so at this time, if you did sign up, we're going to welcome you forward. You'll get your three minutes, so please come forward if you're interested in speaking.
I see one.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Patty Langen, and I am the president and conservation chair for Buena Vista Otter Bon Society. Thank you for your work to incorporate improvements to the Oceanside Transit Center project. I'm here regarding the final EIR responses to Buena Vista Otter Bon Society comments, specifically our request to incorporate bird-friendly building design standards. The FEIR response states, for our comments, states that the proposed structures would not be substantially different than existing daytime glare already experienced in the general vicinity. However, in order to reduce the approximately 1 billion bird fatalities every year to window collisions, cities cannot continue with the same designs. The design requirements should be different, incorporating changes known to lower bird mortality. I appreciate hearing the Toll Brothers' goals of planning for a better future. We have the knowledge and ability to make the future better for birds as well. The FEIR also states, and I quote, "Nor would the project substantially interfere with the movement of any native resident or migratory wildlife species, including bird species." Oceanside is situated along the Pacific Flyway, a major migratory route for birds in spring and fall. According to Cornell Lab of Ornithology, an estimated 688,000 birds cross San Diego an estimated 688,000 birds cross San Diego County on a single evening in May this year. During migration, millions of birds pass through our county twice every year. Building collisions are a major cause of bird mortality for migrating birds and have a significant impact on overall bird populations. In the past 50 years, the total number of all birds in the United States has declined by 3 billion birds. An unsustainable loss. The City of Oceanside has already agreed to include bird-friendly building standards in the GPU. These standards have already been required as part of the Olive Park Apartments' EIR. What is the reason for delaying implementation? These design standards should be formally adopted now, making them a routine requirement for building design. Thank you for considering my concerns.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessel Sines. I've lived here my whole life. And I am not in support of this project because they mentioned that it's not an apartment project. But if it wasn't, there wouldn't be an apartment project planning to be built. And there's already enough congestion in downtown Oceanside on Thursdays, Fridays, and the weekends. It's very hard to find parking, especially during sunset hours, when there's the Sunset Market in the morning and the afternoon, mostly that afternoon. There are various apartments still being built in Oceanside. There's the Jefferson Ocean Creek that is still being built. That is 295 units. That is at Crouch Street and Oceanside Boulevard. There are apartment, there are, sorry. There are 16 detached condos that are, I think they're still being built, on the Rancho de la Oro Road. And I don't think apartments are a smart idea right there because there is already a lot of people. There's not enough parking. It's going to add more congestion. As someone mentioned, that the Regal, they are trying to build apartments right there as well. It'll just add more cars. And the parking structure, I believe they said, would be seven stories. And the people that will live in these apartments are going to have cars, maybe not all of them, but a lot of them will. And it will add to that, since they are adding a parking structure. And I just don't think it's a good idea. I think if they wanted to focus on public transportation, they would focus on that solely and not on apartment complex. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Ashley. Sorry, just found about this today, so I didn't get to plan anything in advance. But I'm happy that the train station's going to be improved. I think that's amazing. I think that the city needs to do a much better job of considering the people that live here and how all of these new facilities or apartments and residential complexes are going to affect the current citizens. Just to kind of pare it off of what the previous person just said. Something that I have not heard anybody else mention that I'm also very concerned about is you are doing all of these housing development projects, which is great. Housing is needed. But where are they going to go to school? You've closed two school downs recently. Like, where are all these kids going to go to school that move here? It's great that you are building housing. High rises in downtown Oceanside, not cool. People have lived here for a long time. They paid money for those views. Should not be taken away. We don't need another hotel. We already have two big, huge hotels. Traffic is already a nightmare. Most of the time, I don't want to go anywhere down in that area, except for maybe to ride my bike. But you guys haven't really given us safe roads to ride our bikes or places to lock our bikes up if we want to ride our bike places. So I think that the city needs to do a lot better job considering the impacts on the community before they're going to continue to push more residential buildings and high rises and more traffic in our areas. That's about it.
Hello, my name is Caleb. I have grown up in North County, born and raised. And I guess I've just watched throughout the years as the coastal towns have changed. And it's something when I grew up, I was just dropped off in downtown Oceanside or in Encinitas. And I was just there in the parks and at the water until the sun set, and I got picked up. And although change is just one of the few constants in life, it's difficult to watch as, I think, the community that I felt and loved. Every time I would come back, I'd feel like it was losing a little bit of that heartbeat every time. And I appreciate the need for the public transit. And also, I understand the struggle that, the limited funding. And in some ways, we do need to partner with private organizations and institutions to be able to have these projects. But seven stories of apartments on the beach from luxury home builders aren't, I guess, in my view, what's going to really enhance the community or stick to the heartbeat of what makes Oceanside, Oceanside, and what makes North County San Diego, North County San Diego. I do feel a little bit, I guess, frustrated with this concept of patting ourselves on the back that 15% affordable housing is more than the 10% that is allocated, when a lot of studies have shown the necessity for 30% to 40% in TOD projects such as these. And this idea that developers are losing $3 million on what they're going to end up getting, which is a great deal on coastal land for luxury apartments and hotel that's going to make everything back within a year or two. Yeah, and I feel bad for, I guess, my friends and family who also live near the coast in Oceanside, who there are wonderful, amazing businesses and houses just along the coast, and not even so much as they paid for these views, but they have. That disturbs the culture and what Oceanside is. It's not a, it's by the people, for the people. It is the ocean and its residents in one like, one big group. It's not a seven-story sky rise that prevents and separates, you know, essentially the city into two. And yeah, I guess I just would hope that you continue to consider what the true ethos of North County is in San Diego and Oceanside.
Thank you. So that ends the public participation. And I think we had applicants got seven and a half minutes. So if the applicant would like to address any of the issues that have been brought up.
Hello, my name is John Hyde. I'm at Toll Brothers Apartment Living. I wanted to clear up a couple items. For the bike parking, there will be 100 bike stalls in the residential buildings, as well as 50 in the parking structure. In addition to that, throughout the site, we're going to have sprinkled about 119 stalls that are going to be between bike racks, bike lockers, I should say, open bike parking, as well as a bike corral that's here by the city hall. That's 119 throughout the site. That's for both long and short-term parking. For EV stalls, we're going to be abiding by the code. So we're going to have 550 EV-ready stalls, as well as 132 installed car chargers on day one. And for the community room, we will be having 1,700 square foot community room located on the ground level of the parking structure. And that's going to be managed by the city. So that will be available for any community use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. First, just want to say I appreciate the public comment. Anytime we got a project that's this big, I think it's always important to hear all sides that come to the table. Just to answer a few concerns that came up, I think for us, we are still looking to put power at OTC for our trains. The likelihood of us being able to do that would probably be best served in this project while we're doing construction at the OTC. It would provide us the best opportunity to do that. I would say we've heard a lot of concern about emissions. And I think as an agency, we totally agree with that. In fact, our agency has expedited our process to go to zero emission. And on our coaster cars, we're actually Tier 4 on those engines. We're about 15 to 20 years in advance of the state of California's requirement to be a Tier 4. So the last engines that we bought along the coaster line are all Tier 4 compliant, which mean they're somewhere between 75% and 90% less pollutant and 75% to 90% quieter than the original engines that we had along that line. On our buses, we only have about five diesel buses left in our fleet. Our fleet is comprised of almost completely CNG, a hydrogen fuel cell, and battery electric bus. Our goal is to continue to go down that path. And then I would further that with our Sprinter line, which is also, we're having conversations, which are in really discussion phase right now, about transitioning our entire Sprinter fleet over to zero emission as well over the next 10 years. So that may happen sometime sooner than that, depending on the testing of the vehicles. There are very few zero emission rail vehicles of that type within the United States. We have some that are battery electric and some that are hydrogen-powered. So we're trying to find out what the best opportunity provides our customers here in North County. I will just say on the ingress egress piece, we, one of the things that we were already looking at in the absence, if this project was not going to happen, we would still move forward with relocating the bus bays to that parking lot. Right now, and I think you heard from some of the speakers that came in today, that that nearly 10-minute walk and, you know, I lived right here on Cleveland Street, right there, Pier Side South. And I can tell you that that walk between the bus bays and the transit bays is sometimes difficult for people trying to make a connection, especially if they have mobility issues, if they're using a device. Or even, for me, that's a little bit of a long walk to get down to the end of the coaster station down there. So even in the absence of this good project, we would have looked to move our bus bays anyway to the other side of that place. And one of the things that we take into account when we talk about safety issues are, and we heard a little bit of it today, are talking about pedestrian and bicycle safety. The more left and right turns that we have to make out of a transit center put pedestrians and bicyclists at risk. The best way for us to get in and out for ingress egress from a transit center is a straight shot east-west to Coast Highway. Yes, there have been questions about the roundabouts. I've worked at four transit agencies in my career, and we've never had an issue driving a bus around a roundabout. So, you know, we still want to hear those thoughts and opinions as they come to us. Obviously, we don't want to clog up streets with buses. That's not our objective here. Our objective is to work closely with the city and the community and put forward the most responsible ingress egress plan into the new transit center. So just want to throw a couple of those ideas out there. And again, I really appreciate all the feedback from the public today. I always think that's important when we do these large-scale projects like this. I'm happy to take any questions from the commission, if you have any for me. But if not, we'll walk away.
Commissioner Rosales.
Thank you, and thanks for that input. Yeah, I made notes while the speakers were talking about a couple of things. I just heard you say about the shore power, that it's an idea you're thinking about. Is it just a think-about item, or is it a commitment? Because it sounds like you're already moving towards natural gas, or you have on the buses. What about that shore power idea, commitment, or just kind of looking at it?
Yeah, I would say, you know, from my perspective, I would like to see that at several of our stations. I would say the uniqueness of this project is it would probably be irresponsible for us to explore that until we had some certainty about what was going to happen with this project. Because we have different train sets that we use for different things. Right now, we're running a three-car train set pretty much during the day. During Padres games, we run a five-car train set. The location of where that power would be would kind of be contingent upon how we have to set up with the new bus bay, the new Sprinter bay, opportunities to maybe relocate MetroLink and Amtrak. All those things kind of go into the final design of the project. But I would say, you know, our commitment has always been that we want to try to look into those things. And if we can aggressively seek funding to do that, you know, we want to make sure that we put our best foot forward.
Yeah, and that's fair enough. In the final design, if you could contemplate that, I understand the different setups. Bus circulation, we heard that a lot. And I think it's going to be a challenge, given that, I looked at one of the printouts that we had from a consultant, the number of buses that are going to be circulating in and out of there onto Missouri Street and some of the others. It's pretty tight to that area. Seagate is, if I understand, kind of just a one-way out. Sounds like you're committed to that circulation pattern that was discussed. Is there anything else that can be done to ease that, you know, what we saw in the presentation? Or is that kind of like what the community's going to have to wrestle with?
Well, I would say that that would be our preferred option. I mean, I'm not going to stand up here today and tell you something different than that. I do think that there are opportunities for us to explore what that looks like. I will say that I do share some of the concerns about the increase in parking traffic at the new location in addition to bus. And that may be something that we need to have a discussion with the city as to where we have automobile traffic, versus where we have just bus traffic that's along those corridors. And those are things that we can talk about in real time. I have no issue with that at all. I mean, I want that conversation to be open. But I would say, for us, where the relocation of the transit center would be, where the bus bay would be, I think it would be a potential safety hazard for pedestrians and bicyclists for us to make a left onto a non-main highway such as Cleveland or some other, you know, some other street, Tremont. Like, if we make a left on Tremont to get to Seagate, that's a potential issue for us on safety. And we want to try to save the city's, the side streets for solid bicycle and pedestrian safe access. We already see a little bit of that on Seagate right now. Like, when we come out of Seagate, out of the bus center, right there at Cleveland Street, and I lived right there, there's like a four-way walk across, and then there's another crosswalk right up the street between Blade and the movie theater. And then you get to Seagate. It is very difficult for our buses to move off of Seagate. And right now, that's our only egress out of our transit center. And that is already a difficult space for us to try to make that left and right, or to even make the left turn off of Coast Highway to get in there. The potential for a roundabout gives us an opportunity to safely make those entry and exit points off of Michigan or Missouri.
Two more questions, sorry. To the point, does your final design process, your final development process, will it include not only city input into sort of the final configuration, but also additional community input to kind of what's being looked at?
Yeah, I think we're going to look at all of that. I mean, I would note that this is really a Toll Brothers project, although we are in partnership. And I do think that, and I will give Toll Brothers a lot of credit, as we've inserted input into the equation, it has been accepted and received and tried to, you know, we try to put those things into the final plan as we move forward.
Yeah, I would encourage continued community involvement. Last question, and I think it's a good one. I don't know anything about this topic area, but the bird strikes? And if there is a remedy for decreasing the number of bird kills, if you will, by just using a different sort of glass material? Again, that's not at all my area of expertise, but I heard a couple of comments.
Yeah, that's also not my area of expertise.
Is that something that could be built into the final design? Is that simple? It sounds like it's an issue, so I'll leave it there.
Yeah, Michael McCann, Managing Director with Toll Brothers Apartment Living. To answer your question, I got to admit, I'm not that familiar with the window technology. We will look into it. Certainly appreciate the concerns. We'd love to alleviate those concerns. I promise to look into it and have a better response going forward.
Appreciate it, thank you. That's all I have, Tom.
Commissioner Redgate.
Hi. Thanks, everyone, for the comments. That was helpful. I asked questions around my community, and something that got brought up that I think some of our residents want some clarification was the partnership with Toll Brothers. And really, just to kind of clarify and shed light on what the North County Transit District has in place or is getting out of this, because this is public land. And I think that we have high expectation, is what I hear, of whoever will be developing here, because we have taxpayers, you know, locals, residents, everyone, who I think we value their input, right? So just if you could shed light and clarify what that partnership is and what the, you know, so we have a better understanding.
Yeah, I would say there's a significant amount of investment through this project. And having done some other mega projects before, and I think it was noted by one of the public speakers, occasionally it's increasingly difficult to find public dollars, either at the federal level or at the state level, to be able to match projects of this magnitude. And for us as an agency, if we were really going to undertake this by ourselves, there would have to be a significant investment in the transportation side. And I think one of the slides showed it was about $100 million. That's sort of unheard of. That's sort of unheard of in the public-private partnership realm. I mean, that's a big number for us to be able to, you know, see that change to our bus island, and really see those improvements from a customer service perspective by having our offices right there on the platform. Those are things that we would want out of that project, and so it really helps us sort of build the template for what the future might be from an OTC perspective, and really having that be a landing pad, not only for Sprinter and coaster, but our bus operations as well.
So to clarify, they're investing in the development of North County Transit District building and every, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, Commissioner Redgate. So includes the relocation of the bus loop, as well as a bus operator rest areas, placing them immediately adjacent to the bus loop, so shortening the amount of time that it takes to get to the buses, as well as that new customer service center front and center, so that, as I heard one of the speakers, Spanish speakers, as well as the visiting public, is able to ask directly questions, providing that ticket. There was a beautiful rendering that you saw of that new customer service center. There will be new TVMs, ticket vending machines immediately adjacent to that, as well as brand-new restrooms. They will be gender-neutral restrooms, as well as outdoor washing facilities, which will be safer. So each of the restrooms will be individualized. You'll be able to come outside, wash your hands, all exposed to the light. Again, much, much, much safer. Our new onsite management amenities will mean that NCTD employees will be on the ground at each of the workdays, as well as Amtrak employees, so the Amtrak offices, so that Amtrak riders will also be immediately adjacent to where they will be able to catch their trains as well. We will be truly multimodal, immediately adjacent to where you will be able to catch your trains. And in addition to that, you will also see, as we've mentioned, bicycle, as well as water bottle filling stations, benches, seating, and shading areas.
Are we only asking North County Transit right now, or are we asking developers' questions?
You can ask whatever you want.
Okay. Sorry, I wanted to make sure we were at... I wanted to make sure I wasn't just able to address the North County Transit. So since we're asking, I also heard about the park and the open space. I saw the pictures for the open space for the public. It's actually not very big, and when I think of having, I think something in the paperwork said like having amenities and social gatherings, and I think there was talk about like music. It didn't seem big enough to, it seemed relatively small. Additionally, there's no park for the children and families. That was another concern that I heard in the community. It wasn't really addressed here, but we know we discussed the school, somebody brought up the school. So there is no park for families and children to really access, and if we're thinking about first-time homeowners going into homeownership opportunities, which we talk about in the city of Oceanside often, these are these opportunities with affordable housing, and I'm assuming they're families, not everyone, right? That's fair, but what about the families with children? Where would they access? That would be private to the housing. That maybe the public spaces wouldn't be able to be as safe for children to run around, or where's a slide or a swing?
Each of the apartment communities has its own amenity spaces within the community itself, so there's both courtyard areas, pool areas, play areas for people of all ages, frankly, within the community itself. There hasn't been a lot of focus on the particular design of the residential buildings. Not only will there be those exterior areas, but onsite in each of the buildings, they'll have their own fitness centers, club houses, makers' quarters or makers' rooms we have where people can do arts and crafts. We've got other projects where you see people tutoring their children in the workspaces that we provide for the public. You see people doing art projects within the makers' room area. And so they're their own little kind of contained live-work-play environments that would serve the sort of folks that you're concerned about. Exterior within the transit center, there was some debate about how big to make the plaza and how active to make it. At the end of the day, there was always this overriding concern that it's a transit center so people can park, bike, walk, otherwise get there by buses and catch trains, and then if you jam too much in there for outdoor activities, you might start impeding the ability to travel there. So we tried to find just the right balance of open space, a little bit of a grass area, areas where you can have activation, maybe even a food truck here and there, but we couldn't overdo it because it is, at the end of the day, a transit center. There's some, you know, some people talked about, they want a Grand Central Station. Frankly, I think if I showed up with the Grand Central Station that you see in LA, I would have been beaten up and thrown out of the city for trying to create it, you know, too much of an urban kind of environment. So again, trying to create that activity and the multi-things you can do there, restaurant space, meeting, community room space, offices, et cetera, and have all that interconnectivity with people, and yet do it in an Oceanside sort of way.
Okay, but just to clarify, the spaces you spoke about to accommodate families and children, there weren't green open spaces, right? Because you talked about the fitness centers, the clubs, the spaces where they could tutor, but it wasn't green open spaces?
There's not parks, per se. There are courtyards, which there'll be a lot of landscaping, plush areas, seating areas, pools, spa. Sometimes we'll have playground equipment inside of them, depending on kind of the environment and the makeup of the building. We haven't gotten into the nitty-gritty of that yet. I'm effectively describing all sorts of the apartment communities that we put together nationally. We've got best-in-class landscape architect who I think is itching to kind of get pen to paper and start planning the sorts of spaces that you're concerned about, and we're hearing your concerns about making sure that there's areas for these families to enjoy themselves, so we'll keep that in mind.
Thank you. Next, sorry. I also wanted to bring up economic development. I have a couple of different documents that talk about the increase of jobs. I know one of the gentlemen's discussed the job opportunities to be local, which I would promote as well, to make sure that those jobs are accessible to our residents, to our locals in North County, not just in Oceanside. So is that something you're considering and making sure that it's going to be in your plan to support the workforce here? Because the economic growth that shows in the paperwork states that it's like 3,000, I think, jobs temporary, right? That's during construction and development. But what happens after is decreased to what, I think, 600 or less job opportunities?
658, correct.
Right, and so I would hope that, that would be separate, right? That's probably the restaurants, the Amtrak, all of those jobs, and I would hope that residents would have access. But the construction prevailing wage, I know that's the union discussed, you know. So I'm curious how you're going to accommodate making sure that our locals have access to those job opportunities.
Well, and the prevailing wage you mentioned is no small thing. There's over $100 million of public improvements that will be built with prevailing wages. So all of these public improvements that we're talking about will be union jobs conducted as prevailing wage. I think perhaps, you know, what's not being said is, it's still in question exactly how the residential buildings and hotel get executed. As a rule, we do incorporate some union labor. It can be extremely difficult and cost-prohibitive and absolutely kill a project if we are mandated to use specific union labor in specific amounts, but we're all for using best-in-class labor when we can, and those types of subs and consultants will certainly be discussed. We will talk to them, and we will see how we can best incorporate them into the construction of the project.
Thank you. That was all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi, thank you. I am a new commissioner here. I just started in January, I think, is that when we started? So I am, and I used to live downtown, but now I live out in the valley, and so I'm catching up to a lot of this, and I realize a lot of hard work has gone into this project, and it excites me, and I love that there's so much public comment and energy around it. I think that's great. I do have a few questions about, and again, pardon my ignorance if I ask some questions that are obvious and everybody knows, and I'm just the dumb-dumb in the room who doesn't get it. The ownership of this land, right? It's public land, correct? I mean, the public owns the land, and then what happens with Toll Brothers? You're leasing it for a long term, or how does that, who owns the land after the stuff's built?
Yeah, essentially, it would still be a trans-oriental development project. The land portion would be overseen by NCTD, and we would manage that relationship with Toll Brothers or the patrons of the buildings that would exist on the property.
So it remains the transit district's land, and you, what, a long-term lease with Toll Brothers, or like, how does that, what does that relationship?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how long the lease would be. It'd be 99 years.
99 years, okay, okay, that's helpful. Commissioner Redgate was asking about ongoing community involvement, like what's the plan for that after today, say?
Well, I would say for us, you know, from an NCTD perspective, we're going to take the comments that we received back today, and we're going to take a look at that, but, you know, at this point, Toll Brothers would be heading up that portion of the public comment piece of it and how they're going to incorporate that into the project.
Yeah, I'd love to hear how you've done that with other projects, continue to keep the public involved and engaged, whether it be, you know, in hiring and labor, or, you know, community involvement in planning with your landscape architects, anything like that, that shows community partnership.
Eventually, frankly, we have to start executing on the project. So at some point, when we get, to the extent we have a good night here and success, we will head towards city council.
Right.
We will certainly have to, or we will get the opportunity to hear their feedback. We will continue to incorporate the feedback from the city council and the public that show themselves at that time. There'll be then a process where we go to, well, actually, the city goes to Coastal Commission to amend the local coastal plan, and that's, again, another opportunity for the community and the public at large weighing in on the project. Once we get the Coastal Commission approval, frankly, we have to start spending millions and millions of dollars on the plans and things kind of settle down. So there is some opportunities to engage with the public and to hear more from them.
Your facilitator's back here itching to talk to me.
Oh, thank goodness.
Yes, thank you. I was like, "Cock-a-doodle-doo, I'm here."
Marlene wants to get in.
I do, I'm like, "Tag me in." So in addition to the public hearing opportunities that Mike was speaking to, city council, Coastal Commission, there are several locations for public art that are included. Oceanside, yeah, Oceanside is one of 14 cultural districts in the state of California. We have a really incredible arts community here, and so we've had a lot of conversations with your Arts Commission. Main Street Oceanside has a really robust program, and all of the OMA is all working towards public art in the city. And so what we've talked about with those groups is really launching a public process to help us design and curate that public art. So telling the history of Oceanside, we've heard requests from friend Mike Bullock about talking about the environment and sustainability, and really being able to tell the story of Oceanside meaningfully through public art. I talked about the tower opportunity, so those are all little nuggets that are sprinkled throughout the project that will absolutely continue to have public engagement on.
You work with Toll Brothers?
Yeah.
And so like, public engagement is your jam?
It's my jam.
Okay, I love that, mine too.
Yes.
Because I would love to see, you know, I mean, obviously, there's so many things that are attractive about this project. We need something like this, you know, we need these transit hubs and to frankly, I think, get folks out of their cars and into public transit, and I'm all for that. And I think sometimes we miss an opportunity during things like this, once the project's approved, you know, if that happens, right?
Like, tiddly-oo.
Then it's like, everybody's gone, and then the next thing, there's a ribbon cutting or something, you know, yay. But there's all this opportunity to keep the public engaged and involved, and really, you know, any of the changes that come out of the public participation, you're not really giving the community anything. We're designing this together.
Sure.
Right? I mean, I'd love it if we had that attitude, not like whose side you're on or anything like that, like this is our community, we're building it together, and, you know, as long as you're sticking around Toll Brothers, folks, right? Like, you're a part of the community then too, and have obviously some skin and some money in the game. So I would love it if we could commit to a really robust, continued public process as this moves along, because this is a once-in-a-generation project, you know? And it could change the whole feel of downtown and the community there, and I think the public, you know, not only deserves, but would enjoy. It would be really exciting to be involved in that as it's happening in any creative ways we could find together. So I'd love to have a commitment to what that would look like, even beyond just the art, you know, like programming, or anything that folks could give some feedback on that wouldn't be an adversarial kind of engagement, right? But just, let's have some fun with this.
Yeah, I totally agree, and I don't think throughout this process, we heard from some neighbors who are in opposition, but I absolutely would not have called this an adversarial process by any means. I think, true, there are some things that we have not been able to say, yeah, we'll do it right away, but I think that compromise and that collaboration has really been there. I think there is a commitment to continue that communication going forward. You know, people have mentioned Regal or the other projects that are happening in downtown, and so continued communication and coordination, it's going to be paramount, not just from Toll, but from NCTD too. And so that partnership and how we're rolling stuff out through their channels, through, you know, Councilmember Joyce has active social media, there's lots of different groups in the area that are pushing out information, and making sure that we're also providing those opportunities too, is going to have to be something that we consider.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've heard, and I've noticed, there's a challenge in the city around folks knowing what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have like a centralized calendar of things, there's some, you know, little bits here if you're following this thing on social media, whatever. And I think if this could be a model of how we could help that, because this is a project that involves the whole community, right? But essentially, we want people to be coming down here, hopping on trains, going places, having their, you know, picking up their relatives here, whatever. So it's not even, like, I understand the minimum requirements of notification and blah, 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 but we can't, that's, those are floors for us, right?
Yeah, and I think a lot of the local partnerships that we've talked through were those local relationships that we've developed over the last few years. I think are testament to that.
Yeah.
I mean, Main Street Oceanside's email list is about 2,000 people. Jane and OCNA have a pretty significant email list, too. I know they're actively pushing stuff out. The city has been really wonderful at posting stuff on our behalf, so that our community meetings were pushed out on social media, posted to Nextdoor, all of that. So I think really having all those groups and that kind of a coalition, which I believe we already have in place, it's just a matter of getting the collateral and making sure that everyone can push it out and that they have access to the information.
Are you from Oceanside?
No.
Where do you live? Are you local?
I live in Poway.
Oh, okay, not too far. You can come down and hang out.
I do a lot of work in Oceanside, I spend a lot of time up here, and this project in particular, but the city is just really special, and I think we talk a lot about the culture and the character, and that's something that we've taken really seriously here, and making sure that we're doing right by the folks who live here, so.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have an environmental impact report question. Who's that?
Far away.
Okay, I know, everybody sits down. No. The, so I think it may have been, I'm so grateful for the public comment, actually, because I mentioned, you know, I'm a new commissioner, and we got this on Thursday night, I think, and there's, you know, some thousands, I can't read every single page of this. If somebody can, I want to know what's on, yeah, what you're eating, drinking, whatever. So a comment came in around the, like, the biological resources survey, right? And that the firm that was hired had gone out for like 90 minutes in October and was, you know, listing the species of particularly the birds, right? We're talking about the birds and the bird strikes. And that, I just thought, I read the public comment, I was like, this can't be right. Let me go look this up. That they didn't notice any nests or any nesting activity. Yeah, duh, it's October, right? Like, a biologist thought that was an aha? I'm sorry, I don't mean to insult you if that was you. That wasn't you, was it?
No, I'm Michael Baker International, Kristen Vog.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't mean to...
I did, I was the environmental impact reporter in our firm, also had the biologist that did the surveys.
Come on.
As part of the environmental, we do have to go out and gauge the existing conditions with time of the notice of preparation.
Right.
We need that baseline, and they do have to document what they... And they do have to document what they saw. Obviously, certain times of the year, you're not going to have nesting birds. It's a consideration that is made. So they'll go out and they'll do the surveys, document what they found. But then they also do a lot of desktop research on what species are in the area. And they do look at what's there on the ground, what's in the area, and what they would suspect would come in in the spring seasons when nesting would occur. So there's a lot of our presence or could be present. So there's a lot of potentials in the bio.
One species that I noticed was not listed as even potential or observed was the green parrots. And y'all had like a, an outreach session at a place called Green Cheek, which is named after the parrots. And I just found that like, that's an interesting omission. It's, it's an interesting little community of wild parrots that exist down there. And that it never showed up and that some community outreach had it. It seemed kind of, it bothered me, I'll say.
So we do the lists. So we look at the federal, state, and local listings of special status species.
Yeah.
Not all species make those lists. So that was, that's the listings. We can't list all the species that are out there because there's a lot. A lot of the common species, we'll give examples, but we don't necessarily state every species that may be on the ground. With SEQA, our thresholds of significance, are those listed special status species for the most part.
Yeah, yeah. It just, those are, these are the kind of things, and I totally understand that these projects and the research that they take, it's costly, right? And I feel like sometimes these are the floors of our research, right? And, and that just seemed like a, like a telling omission that gave me pause about the level of, of detail the rest of the report would contain, you know? It kind of, it, I didn't like it.
So SEQA, so the job of the city, we have to look at the California Environmental Quality Act.
Yep.
And the state has outlined specific thresholds of significance that are our bars to measure environmental impact too. So the biological resources thresholds are specific to like the special status species.
Right.
And also natural communities that support those things too.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's not a document all and explain every single thing that could happen. It, we really have to stick to the, the measurement of the bars of the SEQA threshold.
Yeah, it, it was interesting to me that another biologist doing the same, you know, doing a survey had such a significantly different set of observations, right? And, and so that was troubling. And, and because, you know, I can't read every single thing, you know, in four days, when I see something like that, it's frustrating.
It really depends on what time of the year they go out.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So a lot changes. And that's why, like, for example, the mitigation for pre-construction surveys for nesting birds, the bar of thumb is normally it's literally like three days before construction. Because that much can change in a very short amount of time on what's actually out there. So it's not surprising that there might be a lot of differing observations depending on when it went out.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, 90 minutes, like, pre-lunchtime to, to look at bird activity is just, is not a great time, you know, from, from a biological standpoint? I would just, it's not when the activity's happening in October. But this is another one of those opportunities where, you know, the, the nesting birds, I don't know when, you know, shovels are going to get in the ground, right? And, or demolition's going to begin. But this is another opportunity for public participation. We've got the Audubon Society here. Maybe they want to be a part of that, like, going out and monitoring and helping to, you know, observe if there's any nesting birds. Like, these are the kind of partnerships that I'm talking about, I think, would be really valuable to kind of add legitimacy to this project as it moves forward and continued public participation and engagement investment. Because it's public land and this is a once-in-a-generation project.
Yes, and nesting birds is a concern. So we do have mitigation measures in the EIR that do say that we do need to have monitors out there to do pre-construction surveys and ensure that we're complying with the law with regards to nesting birds.
I know that, that it's in there. And I, and I always, you know, hope for the best. And it's always another opportunity, though, to get the folks in the community who also have concerns in those areas to reach out to them as partners. "Hey, let's go do the survey together," or something like that. Something creative, something different, something that, you know, communicates a level of desire to continue to be in engagement with the public.
You, you can absolutely request a condition and, and ask that we invite, invite them to the pre-construction survey.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, thank you for helping me through this too.
No problem. I'm here to help if I can answer any other questions we might have.
Thank you, that was it.
Commissioner Obama.
Well, I have to first say that I, this is a pretty exciting project. I've been involved in the city for quite some time now, and this has been something that's always been on the cusp, because we've got a transportation hub here like no other city in North County has. I'm just so excited that we have the OTC and Toll Brothers coming together with the city and the community to have cotton this far with this great project. And we've heard a lot of great stuff that's going on, like, things have been addressed, like, the biking community was, is pretty much being in, in dress, the EV with the electric vehicles is, is good. So, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff going on. The only thing I, I would have to say is, is that I know that the exiting of these buses is, is the biggest thing that I've heard that's kind of the negative. And I know that you're going on to Missouri and Michigan both. But is there any way to push more buses onto Michigan rather than Missouri? I mean, you don't have to already go back to Seagate, I understand that. But is it, you've pretty much figured out that Missouri and Michigan are kind of equal. Looks like the way the buses are going through, there's probably about an equal amount on each, each one of those streets that are getting pushed out. And Missouri seems like it's more residential to me, just driving around and experiencing those streets than Michigan. Michigan's got the signal, it's going to have the roundabout, it's going, it's kind of more of a bigger street that kind of, I mean, I don't know. You've already studied this so much for how many years with all your amazing people? So I know that you got, you got the answer. I just was trying to listen to the community and there's, there's angst about this whole thing of pushing those buses down Missouri.
Yeah, I would say specifically, the difference between Michigan and Missouri is going to come down to where routes are coming in, northbound, southbound, or east and west. And we're going to want the path of least resistance to not be on backstreets. So if they're coming southbound on 101, you know, we may use a northbound street. They're coming southbound, we're probably going to use the, the, the closest southbound street. It will depend largely on how the roundabout project goes. That's a big piece of how we would probably determine bus routing. The roundabout is, in my opinion, and I've seen it in all the cities that I've served, is a safer ingress egress for buses making a left turn in or out of somewhere than a stoplight. And so we're, we're happy to see that investment in that corridor. We think that from a traffic movement perspective, that will provide us a lot of unique opportunities, not just for public transit. I think that the city staff did an excellent job with that. So, you know, we're, we're excited to kind of jump on to that. But I wish I could give you a solid answer on that today. The answer is really dependent on the roundabout projects themselves and, and the frequency of buses moving northbound, southbound along Coast Highway.
How, now that you brought that up, how, how are these two projects going to come together? The Coast Highway Vision Plan and the, and this, the, the whole transit station? Is it going to happen that the roundabout might happen around the same time or no?
Yeah, I can't really necessarily speak to the timing of that. What I can tell you is, and maybe not necessarily from a Toll Brothers perspective, but from an NCTD's perspective, they're, they're, they're locked.
They're locked.
You know, our ability to be able to see the successful outcomes of the OTC project are driven by the Coast Highway project. And so for us, that doesn't just include buses or cars, that's pedestrian access, that's ingress egress for bicycles. That's how we move west of Coast Highway in relation to the Coast Highway project. And so, you know, our team has worked with city staff for a lot of years and we've got a great relationship with them and appreciate all the work that they do.
Yeah.
And we're going to stay really close to them because we want these projects to be, at least from the bus ingress egress piece and the Coast Highway project, we want them to be as close together as possible.
That's great news, that's great news. Well, thank you so much for your presentations, for the community to come out here and speak on all this. We've learned a lot tonight and it's, I, I pretty much am, you know, I'm supporting this project. I think it's something we've waited for, for a long time, and you've done a great job with all the stuff you've done. I just, the one thing, the only thing I have, the little caveat is more, more on Michigan and less on Missouri, but that's all I could say as far as like, if I was going to be a, you know, a neighbor. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sean, thank you so much. I don't see any other questions of the applicants. So if that's the case, we bring it back to the dice. Do we have any comments or do I, can I get a motion?
Why don't we add conditions?
Pardon me?
Why don't we add conditions? Is that part of, like?
I'll make a motion and if you're not satisfied with it, you can add conditions and we can consider it.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I, I'll echo what Commissioner Obama indicated. I think it's kind of the logical conclusion, not conclusion, addition maybe, to the downtown area that we add a more relevant, I guess, maybe that's the wrong word, transit center that includes not just transit but also the needed quality of housing that the Oceanside's looking for and a, and a really good space. It doesn't solve everything, it's, it has its own issues, as we heard tonight, bus circulation and whatnot, it's not perfect. But I think it'll be a really good addition to the community. And I appreciate the, the co-operation of the, the partnership here and, and what you've done to, to reach out to the community. So with that, I will make a motion. I can read all the different items, Tom, if you want to make it.
For the record?
For the record, yeah. So, give me a second to find it. So, on the Oceanside Transit Center redevelopment project, I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-15 recommending the city council certification of the EIR, approval of general plan amendment 22-02, zone amendment RZA 22-1, local coastal program amendment 22-04, vesting tentative map 22-06, development plan D22-16, and regular coastal permit RC 22-11, which again is for approval of the Oceanside Transit Center specific plan and redevelopment of the Oceanside Transit Center on the 10.15 acre site.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I would gladly make a second.
Please vote. Very soon, there we go.
Yeah. Quick question, is there abstain available on a vote or does it have to be yes or no?
Yeah, I don't understand, procedures, I'm still learning, but I, I had interest in talking about some conditions and I don't know when that was supposed to happen. I thought that happened after the motion.
Typically, if somebody makes a motion before it's second.
That's when I'm supposed to pop in with my condition?
We can go in for discussion and, and you could ask for some additional consideration for consider, additional items, so.
You can amend our motion too, so what's your condition?
I can amend it before we vote.
Didn't we just vote?
You can amend it, so they can take it back.
Yeah, as long as, as long as the motions was, is, that we seconded it and we made a motion and we can't amend it if she, if what she would like to add is.
Barbara, can you weigh in on our Simpsons rules of order here?
I think it'd be, it'd be fine to just sort of rescind the vote because it sounds like it, it happened a little bit before Commissioner Gonzalez was ready to, to vote. So I think we can, we can sort of.
Wipe the slate clean?
Okay.
Let's, yeah, wipe the slate clean and maybe, and have her weigh in, that we have a motion and a second.
We, we, we won't make Tom read the whole thing again.
No.
All right.
My, my motion stands as I, as I read for the.
Go back to, right before you voted.
Yeah.
I, I would like to invite the, the, the Transit District and Toll Brothers to commit to continued public engagement as the project proceeds to include environmental concerns and economic development concerns around hiring and stuff for the project.
Well, that's kind of nebulous.
Yeah, those, those are fairly vague typically, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the city attorney, if we're going to entertain an amendment to a motion, those are fairly vague conditions as expressed. More substantive would be something that maybe changes the resolution or a condition of the resolution, so.
I mean, obviously, the Toll Brothers and, and NCTD, they've been partners for this many years, they're going to continue to be partners. So we don't have to worry about that. That's an, I mean, that's a non-starter. And by virtue of this project, there's going to be a lot of people, they're going to get jobs.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is a win-win for our community in, in that regard. So I don't know, I think that's, I, I don't think we need to put that condition on, on the motion, is my personal opinion.
I mean, I, can I weigh in? I agree, this is a great project. I heard the community. One, again, one of my concerns is that this is public space for 100 years. That means that our great grandchildren are going to have access to this. And so I want to make sure that we make the right decision. And the open space, right? Like, children living there, affordability of housing is not going to get any better. And so I want to be mindful of the future that's going to be impacted by this. So for me, if there's a stipulation, is that you really reconsider the open green spaces that are available to the residents that would be accessing this, considering how long you're going to be leasing the development, right? The, the area, the space that is public, it, you know? And I want to be mindful of our residents and, and make sure that that's being considered. I heard all of the amenities and for me, that would be a consideration, is that, I think it's great. I'm, I have a background in construction and economic development. I understand that this is a great project and the position, the, the workforce and how it would increase economic standing here for the city of Oceanside. But I also want to be mindful of the people that are going to live here. I'm born and raised here. I spent all my days at the Regal and running City Hall. And so I want to make sure that the spaces are accommodating for the families that are going to live here.
So you think that the spaces that are in, the apartment buildings are where the residences live?
Right.
And there are, I mean, they talked about their, their.
They'll have their own spaces.
Yeah, but they're not really open green spaces for children and families to access. They're indoor amenities, I think that's great, but that doesn't solve the problem of families.
Well, my, my only concern would be, this is transportation.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's residential and that's fine, but are you going to have a park right in the middle of people trying to get to the train and the bus? I mean, there is, there is areas that they can sit and talk right outside of the, I guess where they're going to drink a beer or have a cup of coffee, to sit down. But I, I'm not, I don't see, I don't see where the open, the open space comes into play. I'm not quite sure how that works out.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a commercial slash transit space, not, not real huge. So to make it more residential, open space, green for the children, doesn't really seem like it fits.
But it is a housing development.
It is a housing development where each of the block units will have its own space.
And it's a, it's a large housing development.
Right, maybe it's not to the size of, of space that you think it should be. But they, they've indicated that the final design will include those features just for the residents. So in my mind, that, that suffices because that public space is kind of public space for transit and commercial use.
Why, which is why it's so important that there's private space dedicated.
To the apartment residential areas, correct? Which they indicated would be the case.
They indicated that the space was a lot more amenities, indoor space.
So did you have a comment you wanted to make, if you wanted to opine?
Well, if you wanted to hear it, there are going to be significant outdoor spaces. I use amenity as meaning both indoor and outdoor spaces. So the, the residents of the communities will have a lot of outdoor spaces in big, large courtyards that they'll get to recreate in, in all sorts of ways, including sometimes in a little playground equipment for children, things to climb on, places, the lounge, but that'll be within the apartment building itself. I believe there's some concerns with outside of the building, in the plaza area, they don't really want a playground environment, they're not looking to have children come from outside to play there as it's inappropriate for ability to get to and from the train. So.
Yeah, and I think those are separate.
Okay, yes. Are the residents we will be serving with the apartments will have ample outdoor spaces to recreate in, absolutely. It's just the way they're designed. It's just the way they're designed. If you look at the building layout, the site plan, you can see very large courtyard areas where people can both actively and passively enjoy the outdoor spaces.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. And I would like, and at this point, I think, you know, Commissioners Gonzalez and Redgate have made some points, but let's, to me, I don't know. I think that the motion stands by itself. And we have a second. Let's vote on it and let's see if we have, you know, if there's a majority decision. And if not, we'll take it back to discussion. So with that said, Tom, you made the motion. You still?
Yeah.
All right, let's vote on that again after the additional discussion.
Let the record show that the motion passes four yes, one no, and one abstain.
Tom, can I ask for the record or maybe city attorney? I'm sorry to interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
But abstaining on a vote, is that something that has to have a reason for? Or procedurally, can you explain that to the new members?
Yeah, typically, we do, the commissioners should vote and should not generally abstain unless there is a, unless there's a reason to recuse, a legal reason to recuse. We do want the commissioners to vote. I think there is something in the, it might be in the bylaws that states that commissioners should vote, so.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go to the next item, item five. And.
She could have voted.
Sorry?
Yeah.
I think it's fine. We beat this thing to death.
Will they have to start over?
Yeah. I don't have, I don't, yeah, well, the planner of record isn't here. That's a problem for me. I would have postponed, but, you know, that's another thing that caused the whole thing.
Okay, let's, on item five, item five is the issue that we talked about trying to have a discussion with the city council. And because I think Sergio was so integral into that conversation, I would like to see us table this until our next meeting. Is there an agreement there?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could add to that, Tom, thanks. I'll offer thanks to everybody that put some information forward. But yeah, we've had this conversation now several times with Sergio, and so we'd liked his participation so he could bring in forward. It's a good start on the list of items to consider. So I'll support that idea of pushing this out for perhaps the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. So where are we?
The legislature reports.
All right.
Bye, Anu.
Let us go to city planner commissioners' reports. I'll go first. I have no report. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah, I have a question about minutes. The, in the minutes that we get when we do our reports, it just says provided comments, but there's nothing about like, you know, direction to staff memorialized? Where is that memorialized for us? Shouldn't that be public record or somehow memorialized in our work?
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Would you mind giving a specific example as I'm pulling up the minutes?
Yeah, so if we, I've kind of looked at all of the minutes and it's the same thing, provided comments or no report, right, over and over and over again. But if a commissioner has a question of the planner, please go research this thing, or I have a question about whatever and it's answered, or it's taken back to planning, like, that's not memorialized anywhere.
I see. Thank you for the question. So the way that our minutes work is, and this is the same even for city council, doesn't necessarily act as almost a transcription. Staff relies on the videos. We go back again and again and again and re-watch. The minutes tend to reflect whether there, what motion is raised, who seconds it, if it's amended, for example, those kind of high-level points for the minutes.
I get that that's like past practice, but I don't think it's best practice because it makes it difficult to search the record for something, you know, unless you're searching transcripts of all, the only way to do it is do that same thing and watch the videos to remember, you know, we asked staff to do a thing, or we had a question answered, that sort of thing. Is there, yeah, what do you have to say, Barbara?
The, as Director Nekandro pointed out, this is, we've sort of followed the lead of what city council does. And for years, there were really detailed minutes that were prepared by the city clerk. And those got backlogged.
Sure.
Years and years of backlogs because it takes an awful lot of time to prepare detailed minutes. And so there was a procedure implemented to adopt what they called action minutes, which are just the abbreviated minutes like this. And in particular, that kind of dovetailed with the availability of video recordings of the meetings, which are kept. So it's sort of, the minutes of the meetings are kind of a combination of both.
I wonder if there's not an opportunity to revisit that because technology exists now that it'd be kind of easy to pull that, those minutes. And I don't know that the public or even the commissioners would be able to, like, what would we, if we wanted to refer back to like past reports, where would you recommend we go? Like, watch the recordings? Yeah. I mean, that, we've got the technology, the technology exists to do better than that, does it not?
Well, I.
For you guys, too.
I report directly to the city manager, so I can raise that.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
The other one is about the email that we get, the Planning Commission email, that, like, the folks send their emails to us and then we get them kind of in batches. Can we be getting those as they come in, just so that we don't get them in a trench the day of the hearing? And we could be looking at them as they come?
That's what happened today.
Yeah, right, right. They all came, they were coming in Friday, Saturday, Sunday, whatever. But even as they come in, like, we get the staff report, but folks are emailing planning commissioners. And then they're not, we're not getting those. We get them in the report when it comes and the community, what do you call it, right, that section, that's the community input or whatever. But, yeah. But people think they're emailing the commission. And we don't, like, they're not really. They're kind of emailing an inbox and then we get a thing.
Mary Sue emails them to us when we, when she gets them. I don't, what's your point? I don't understand your point.
My point is, the public thinks they're emailing commissioners, right?
No, they don't.
That Planning Commission.
They go to Mary Sue and then Mary Sue sends us, to us, the planning commissioners.
Well, but the address is Planning Commission. We're the commission, commissioners.
Well, how would you change it?
They could forward automatically to the commissioners?
No, no, that's not how it works. That's not, that's not how we've been doing it. And I think how we've been doing it works.
I think there was an old system in place before and they're working on something.
Okay. I mean, I want to be super respectful to everybody who's been here for a while, right? And, you know, I'm new and I hear the community speaking to me about wanting, you know, my own emails weren't responded to by the planner when I was a community member. And that's a problem for me. And, you know, it's still a struggle to get the emails responded to now that I'm a commissioner. Our chief planner isn't here. The planner of record on this isn't here. There's this kind of scandalous thing going on, and I'm guessing that's why they're not here. And it's a problem. I mean, I don't mean to trot out the whatever, but.
I think that the process for the emails is a city thing, so maybe we address it with the city later.
Sure.
It's a policy thing.
But I agree, there probably could be an easier process versus getting it. But I don't think that's Mary Sue's problem.
I'm not saying it's Mary Sue's problem. I think it's a bummer that Mary Sue's got to hit forward, forward, forward 27 times, times this. That's ridiculous. Like, it's the 21st century.
Certainly appreciate, certainly appreciate your comments, but also know that we have things in place too, that like, like the stuff that I post to you guys isn't due till 72 hours advance and I should give it to you early.
Right.
Typically, I give it to you early. Usually it's Wednesday, but this is a large project, so it went Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm A shift. I wasn't here Friday, so I couldn't forward you anything on Friday.
I get it.
So we get, the typical protocol is Monday, I check that email every hour and forward as I see.
I don't have a problem with what you're doing, Mary Sue. I honestly think that it's not fair to you, that, right? Well, but I mean.
She's getting paid.
But I mean, it's not an efficient, if planning is understaffed, it's not an efficient use of time, really, is it?
If I may, and I might ask the Assistant City Attorney to help me with this. I noticed that on the front page of the Planning Commission Agenda at the bottom, it says to provide written comments on agenda items. You may provide those comments via email on the Planning Commission email address, as Commissioner Gonzalez alluded to. Comments received by noon on the day of the hearing will be provided to the commission and subsequent comments may be provided if time allows. If that is not a satisfaction to the commission, we can certainly talk about that. I don't know if that rests within some bylaws or some kind of regulation, but I just wanted to kind of give you some background as to where that kind of comes from.
I'm not, I don't, I don't doubt that it may have worked in the past and there may have been technological issues to, that's what the solution that was landed on then. But it just, the feedback that I'm getting is that the planning department isn't responsive. The commissioners aren't responsive. The, I mean, I saw a couple of emails that had to come in twice because the question at the end was, please let me know that you received this email, Rob. And I guess Rob didn't reply, so they had to send it again. So that's another forward that Mary Sue has to do this many times. And it just seems inefficient. I mean, we're volunteers here. We should be, I don't know. I don't want to, I realize I'm coming across like a real jerk and I don't mean to. I'm just, I'm trying to do the best I can, you know?
A jerk, don't add it.
Okay, all right.
We appreciate your asking.
But yeah, so the email thing, the minutes thing, those are my reports.
Duly noted.
Yep, moving on, next report.
It kind of all depends on, like, you know, staffing is, they're booked.
Yeah.
And they don't have a lot of time. So it's all based on that, too. So they kind of like pared it down to make it more efficient and make it easier. That's why the minutes are simpler. All that stuff just happened because of the amount of time and the money you got to spend to add two or three more planners.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's just all about that. It's all about money. Everything's always about money.
Commissioner Rosales.
Mary Sue, then forward 500 times.
Any, you have a report?
We all got it.
Moving on, moving on to the next commissioner.
Commissioner Rosales, do you have a report?
Good lord. Yeah, normally I don't have anything to say about, or very little about, community businesses, but I saw Commissioner Anthony at a really nice restaurant the other day and I thought I'd share with you. I mean, I like Mexican food and mostly it's mediocre around here. This is a new place on Oceanside Boulevard.
That's where I want to hear.
It's Ivaga. So agave spelled backwards. Clever. It's down the hill from Goat Hill, the golf course, so.
Goat Hill?
Yeah, by the Dunkin' Donuts strip mall in there, so.
Wow.
So the fact that he and I were there enjoying our meals with our families was key. So anyway, that's all I have for, that's a shout out to a local business. That's my report.
Commissioner Obama, what restaurant do you like? Your report.
Cafe Rosarita is also down that same area. Is this by Fraser Farms? Where's it at?
The next one up.
Oh, the next one up, like by Big Lots? Outside? Oh, east, okay. Just want to make sure so I don't go the right place because, you know, Cafe Rosarita is one of my faves, too.
Yeah.
Hey, speaking of Goat Hill, have you guys played Goat Hill?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. It's not like any golf course I've ever played in my life. You have to be really good to play Goat Hill.
You do.
I loved it. It was such a challenge.
It's called target golf.
And don't go in the sand pit because then you got to like actually elevate your ball out, like, I don't know. It was huge. Well, I'm not a great golfer, but I have fun. So anyway, that's all I have to report.
Vice Chair Anthony.
So quiet tonight.
I've been pretty quiet. And the reason why I've been quiet is because you all asked the questions I would ask. I wrote them down, okay? I'm good. I do have a report. We had on Saturday, we had an outstanding Juneteenth celebration. I had 94 booths out there.
Yes.
We had a great time, good food, good music. Yeah, and people from everywhere came there. Juneteenth, it was right there where they have the farmer's market and, yeah, yeah, right, right there. Yeah, so it was excellent. No, NAACP does that. I'm a member of NAACP, but, yeah, NAACP put that on, so. It was outstanding, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Redgate?
I don't really have anything except for I went to Dirty Dough, the new little cookie restaurant in Ocean, for my kids. You haven't heard of it, Dirty Dough? It's right across the street from Front Wave Arena.
Oh.
And that little shopping center. Anyway, cookies were really good.
Awesome. Used to go there.
No, it's just a coffee, it's like a drink and.
What do you call it? Dirty Dough? Is that what you call it?
Yeah.
Dirty Dough?
My favorite Mexican place is always will be Anita's. Sorry, guys.
Oh, yeah, that's good, too.
Director Nekandro, do you have?
Yes, thank you, Chair Morrissey. There are some upcoming Planning Commission items. There will be 240 Grace Street regarding the First Baptist Church. That includes 19 single-family homes and three set aside for affordable. There is the 1101 South Pacific Street Project, which is a remodel of an existing three-story multifamily residence. The Guahomi Lakes Home Project will also go before the Planning Commission, as well as the city's Mission Basin CIP project. I wanted to alert you that there are several projects that are going to be heard before the city council. The dates are to be determined according to what can fit on the agendas. But those projects will include 801 Mission Avenue, 401 Mission Avenue, which is the Regal Theaters Project, 810 Mission Avenue, which is the component here of the Transit Center project to have the housing, 901 Mission Avenue. Again, city council will hear the Oceanside Transit Center project. Then we will have Blocks 5 and 20 developments. And then, as discussed at last week's council meeting, staff will bring back a proposed storefront cannabis retail reintroduction of the ordinance based on council's direction last week. So we have a number of items coming your way.
Our next meeting is scheduled July 14th, and this meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.